Hey, Jack. I know you're working on another issue, but I just got another notice to change my password. You go, you go, I'll, it just tells me it's gonna change, need to change it in 10 days. And I've changed it twice in a while, so I'll forward this to you. Dave? None of them? Commissioners, Commissioners Adam Change and all email.
Hi. Okay. So we should be good. Thank you. Army?
Are we good? All right. Bring the April 11th, 2023 meeting of the DeKalb County Council to order, and we'll begin with an opening prayer by Councilman Craft.
Father God, we thank you for another day of life, another day to get up and serve you and to serve our community. We thank you for the blessings that you poured out in each one of our lives individually and on this county, and we pray that you continue to help us to be conscious of who we serve and what we're about here as we decide, make decisions for the citizens of DeKalb County. Give us wisdom and give us discernment today. Jesus' name, amen.
And with that, we will open the public hearing on our bond issues for the Highway Department. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this issue? Larry, step forward, state your name, and go for it. You got three minutes. He came in this morning.
Okay, let's try it again. All right, so I wrote the letter to express concern about what I consider irresponsible, irresponsible spending that I've observed within DeKalb County recently, and I think we're on the wrong track fiscally. I've been following DeKalb County Council and Commissioner meetings along with DeKalb Central School District spending discussions for several months. As a career finance professional, I'm very concerned about the direction of county and school district spending plans. Yeah, I think you all received that letter, should have, that I sent on March 15th. I mentioned that the $8 to $10 million highway spending garage, highway garage spending along with the possibility of a $35 million school district. I know these are separate budgets, but it hits the taxpayers. The spending doesn't stop there. We have a discussion of a new jail, and your meeting agenda today shows you'll also talk about adding tube dispatchers to Central Communications. Today, you'll vote approve a bond financing package for a new highway garage. Delays in addressing the need for a new highway garage have caused an increase in the overall cost. In a response to my letter of March 15th, Commissioner Sanderson stated that the project could have been completed in 2018 for $5 million, but the site was rejected even though it would have sat right next to Central Communications, which would have eliminated the need for a new tower, waterline, internet, natural gas, and the 50% increase of construction costs we now see. I believe that Councilman Ring needs to explain the reasons why the project was delayed. I urge the county council to take immediate action to address these concerns by implementing greater oversight and accountability measures. This could include increased transparency in the budgeting process, which is coming up soon, establishing a system of checks and balances to prevent wasteful spending and prioritizing essential services. A few weeks ago, I urged the county council to benchmark their spending against DuBois County, a county comparable to ours in population and in other demographics. I've not received any feedback to this suggestion. A place to start might be to compare DeKalb County's Central Communications staffing and budget with that of DuBois County. You may see some dramatic differences. They could be explained, but I don't, I would like to hear those explanations. As a city of DeKalb, citizen of DeKalb County, I think we have a responsibility to use the resources in a responsible and efficient manner. I trust that you will.
Larry, time's up.
Thank you.
All right. I will, I will address the one issue that you, that you brought up in that there were two other sites that were considered for the highway garage, and yes, the highway garage has needed to be replaced for a number of years, but one site, the one that you're talking about near Central Communications, near DeKalb High School, was rejected by the public for saying that that was an inappropriate site.
When you say "public," who do you mean?
We, we, it was put out there, and there was a good letter-writing campaign against using that site because of its proximity to Font Creek Housing and to the school. So that was rejected in that way. The other site was the county farm, which would have required no purchase of ground. That was rejected by the Commissioners and the Highway Department. So this is, and other sites were sought. This was actually, I think, the fourth site. There was another site that was looked at at County Road 27 and State Road 6, or US 6. Those were rejected. So this, this process has taken a long time and has taken many turns.
And my only response to that, Rick, would be, I have heard public comment to the contrary.
Well, go back and look at the Evening Star and the letters that were written and the people that have protested not putting it on that site.
In any event, I think we need more fiscal responsibility from the council.
And, you know, this council has, has done a number of things to, to bring those kind of expenses into play. We've started a five-year capital plan, which didn't exist before. It's, I think, I think this council has been responsive of those needs.
I think you would agree, you're one of the highest per capita county spending located counties in the state. You would agree?
No, I don't agree, but.
You're number 23.
That's not the highest.
No, it isn't, but.
And, you know, all of those, all of those expenses do go to services that we provide. All right, anybody else that has any comments, reference the bond issue? For or against? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on with our agenda. All right, that brings us to ordinance 2023-OCC-3 authorizing the issuance of lit revenue bonds of 2023 for the purpose of providing funds for the acquisition, construction, installation of a new county highway garage. And I have a motion to pass ordinance 2023-OCC-3 on second and third readings. And per our new guidelines, this was online available, and do we have copies here?
Yep.
If anybody needs them? Okay. I have a motion for 2023-OCC-3. Then moved by Councilman Van Wye. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Yard. Discussion? Comment from the public?
We're not on that. Which one do you have? Oh. I'll look. I changed one of them.
Oh, we promoted you again.
I changed.
Okay. All right, I have a motion, I have a second. Larry, I'll give you another two minutes if you want it.
No, I'll sit, okay.
Okay, very good. Okay, all those in favor of passing ordinance number 2023-OCC-3 signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose same. And that motion is carried. Back to you. And moving on to ordinance 2023-OCC-4 appropriating the proceeds of the lit revenue bonds of 2023. And if I can have a motion to pass this ordinance, ordinance 2023-OCC-4 on second and third readings. Then moved by Councilman Yard. Is there a second? Second by Councilwoman Dembski. Discussion? Comment from the public? Hearing none, all those in favor of this, passing this ordinance on second and third reading signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose same. That motion is carried. All right. Nikki, I think that's it. We have Nikki Franklin is online here in case there were any questions from our financial advisor. So, yes, there were no questions, so thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
All right, bye. All right, moving on. Minutes of the March 14th meeting, and I have a motion to accept the minutes as presented. Then moved by Councilman Yard. Second by Councilman Collins. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the minutes as presented signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose same. That motion is carried.
We're almost to break.
Hmm? Let's add.
Keep it up, keep it up.
We're almost to break. Let's roll.
Yeah, no kidding. I can't believe we're going that fast. And we got some people coming in later, so we might have a very long break because I told them what time we told them to be here. So we can't move too fast. All right, moving on to additional appropriations. All right. Looks like we have two additional appropriations. First one is from Project Income for Community Corrections. All right.
I just can't think when I can't move. That's the issue. I keep me controlled. My energy's.
We'll, we'll, we'll send an email on that. All right, the first one is from Community Corrections. This is from Project Income is the fund. It is account 38999. Overpay, and the account title is overpayment of fees refund. Amount is $4,000. Was this included in the annual budget? And boy, that is so small, I can't read it. Yes, we budgeted $2,000. We have, oh no, Susan, I can't, can't read. Do you have a? Can anybody else read it? I can't.
They don't, well, they type it all in one line. They don't, they don't move to the second line. I have additional lines there, but they don't use them.
Yeah, just reduce the size of the font. How will this appropriate?
Yes, we budgeted $2,000, but we have current, we currently have $4,218 in refunds to process plus any more for.
Remainder of the year, I assume.
Remainder of the year, it's the edge.
All right. How will this appropriation be used? Refund overpayment to probation department clerk or back to the participant? Specific cost of this item is $4,218. We do have, the list is attached as to who is getting a refund. Will other expenditures be necessary? The answer is no, and this was discussed with their council liaison, who is Councilwoman Dembski. Okay, well.
It says no.
Hmm? Oh, it said, oh, it said, she does say no.
I did not know about that.
Okay.
So let me fill in here because this is really just for bookkeeping. I need to check with her to see if she still needs this account. Previously, it was wanted to have a specific account for refunds. I have done refunds for the county just out of a non-budgeted account number because we don't know when we're gonna have refunds. So we did it out of a $50,000 non-budgeted. I do need to just check with her and see if she needs it separated for her grant reporting. Otherwise, going forward, we're not gonna even have this account because it's just to give them the money back, which nobody knows when that's gonna happen.
Well, and there are. I mean, there are actually quite a few. We don't really know how.
There are, and that all depends on when they complete their psych, yeah, cycle or whatever they have to do out there.
What do they pay in advance, and that's why we're refunding? Or do they fail and, well, if they fail, they'd have to forfeit it out, I imagine.
Some of it could be that they have paid multiple places. They've paid like when they were with probation, they've paid at probation, and now they've also paid when they're at Community Corrections. And then when they've completed everything, if nothing, if other fees aren't owed in the county, then they've got extra left. And some of it could come from, I believe, from maybe if somebody post, put some bond money up before they got into the program.
Yeah, it looks like most of this is either monitoring fees or residential daily fees. Okay. All right, well, anyway, do I have a motion to approve this transfer, this additional? Then moved by Councilwoman Dembski. Is there a second? Second by Councilwoman Prosser. Discussion? Comment from the public? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose same. That motion is carried. All right, the next one comes to us from IT. Is for the general fund. The amount is $13,000. It is on a quote from Cease Concrete, not to exceed $13,000. Was this included in your annual budget request? And it was not, this was a new request. How will this appropriation be used? Used to modify existing electrical and cable conduit runs in the floor of Superior Court I for audiovisual upgrade, audio video upgrade. How was the cost determined? It was a quote from the vendor, it's a recurring expense? No. Will other expenditures be necessary? The answer is no. Was this discussed with the liaison? Yes. It was discussed with both Councilman Craft and Councilman Yard because I believe this, you went to both your person, your liaison and Superior to, Superior One's liaison, right? Okay. All right. Jack, do you want to have, do you have anything to say about this or explain what's happening here or?
So basically, this is an ongoing project. It's been about two years in the making, and we've tried a variety of connectivity for the courts, the purpose to, to bring them up to standards for audio video when they're having trials or in the most part. Our first attempt, we went through and did a wireless configuration for their audio video. And basically, what they've done is sort of emulating what we have here, screens up. The prosecutor or the defender would have a video or something going on that they would present as evidence during the court, during, during the trial itself. And they would start the, the video basically, and it would show up on the screen. And usually, I say usually, it would, it would go okay, and then there was the times it would sort of resemble like a Godzilla movie. And then you would hear the voice. So. And, 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 and the judge didn't find that very humorous as far as presenting evidence, that type of thing. So we went back to our vendor and said, okay, so the wireless isn't gonna work for this just because of the size of files, that type of thing. What can we do? And unfortunately, the end result that none of us wanted to go down that road was to go through and dig into the concrete in the floor and expand the conduit, keeping in mind that the courthouse is, you know, 100-plus years old, and a lot of the modifications that had already been done to the courtrooms and that only provided maybe a half inch, half inch conduit between, it even exists here in the Commissioners Court. You've got just a very thin pipe leading from this center table here to go through and feed all the microphones and everything like that. So they, they went through and stuffed as much cables into these pipes as they possibly could, and unfortunately, that would have only been two cables at the time. It would have been one for power and one for microphones. So we're at, we're at a point, the judge is definitely interested in getting this resolved as we are too. And unfortunately, that's, that is our resolution to it, to go through and have Cease come in and, and do some concrete work and get her done. We're planning on a big enough conduit that it'll serve us for many years, many years to come. And to sort of an FYI, if, if we were to take the same design and move it over to Superior Court II, the same would apply. They actually have more restrictions in their wiring path than Superior Court I did. So, and that's, that's what this is all about.
Larry?
And to add to that, what we're gonna do is we're gonna cut a six-inch trough into the concrete and run it from the judge's bench all the way through and cut it a couple different other places. And then instead of filling it back in, we're gonna use a C-channel, put over top of it and put carpet back over it. If we ever have to re-modify, redo, whatever, pull the carpet square up, pull that C-channel up, and then we can go from there. Any questions?
Just one quick, Larry, and I know, I know the answer because I know you've done your homework, but any compromise to the structure with that six-inch channel?
It, it has been done before. It has been cut before because that conduit that was, that's in there right now was not there. And we looked at it, these floors are 16 inches thick, so we're gonna, we're gonna be just cutting about an inch.
Right.
So we're not even getting into the rebar or any of the metal or anything like that. We're just skimming the top, basically. So I, Cease said he didn't see any problem with it, and I surely don't either because we're not getting into the, the actual metal structure that's in the.
I thought that was probably the case. I just wanted to clarify that out.
Yep, yep.
Appreciate it.
Anything else? Okay.
All right. Thank you, Larry.
Yes.
All right, with that, I have a motion to approve this additional.
I move to approve.
Then moved by Councilman Craft. Is there a second?
Sir.
Second by Councilman Yard. Comment from the public? Additional discussion by the council? Hearing none, all those in favor of this additional signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose same. That motion is carried. All right. Moves us on. Transfers. All right, the first one comes to us from the auditor's ineligible deduction. Other service fees to computer equipment, the amount of $124. Purchase of signature pad for the front counter to the entrance, the use, or the use of online deduction ability. Submitted by Susan Sleeper Auditor and was discussed with her liaison, Councilman Craft. Any questions?
I purchased one. Now I'll have two of those. It's an easier.
$124 is a pretty reasonable cost to accomplish that. All right, can I have a motion to approve this transfer? Then moved by Councilman Collins. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Councilwoman Prosser. Discussion? Comment from the public? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose same. That motion is carried. Next comes to us from Age Academy. And this is. Moving $9,436 from program facilitator to liability insurance. This is for the 20- This is for the 2023 school leaders E and O premium. This has always been lumped together with general liability until last year. When we received 2022's invoice for fiscal year '23, juvenile budget was already been submitted and approved. Now we need to transfer money to pay this. As we receive the 2023 amount due $9,436 on March 22nd. Will an additional appropriation be requested due to this transfer? The answer is no. Was this discussed with the liaison? Yes, even I concede that this time, Amy. And it was discussed with Amy. Any questions? Can I have a motion to approve this transfer?
Do you know, Amy, if they're putting that in this year's?
I can verify yes because as soon as I got the information, like, I mean, within days of them having to submit, I was able to get them numbers.
I have a motion. Did I have a second?
Who made the motion? I didn't get it.
Oh, okay. No. A motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Councilman Kraft. Second. By Councilman Dembski. Discussion, comment from the public. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, that motion is carried. All right.
Okay, wait. I think I want to pick up some time for a hot second.
Well, I think we've got a couple of things that we can talk about because our next person's not due for an hour.
Do you want me to read this? We have to read this one? Do you want me to read it? Okay. So I filled in some dates on the back. You all have printed, it was not uploaded because it's just new. We have a memorial resolution for Charlie Wynans.
I was surprised. I didn't even see this.
A little backstory is Andrew Cruz put it together. The families have in a memorial mass April 29th. So the Commissioners were able to approve it yesterday. And if I can have you guys approve it today, then I'm going to ask the Commissioners if they want, if we possibly could try and have some of the family come in on April 24th at their next Commissioners' meeting. And then that way they would be able to have it for their memorial. That's why it's such a quick thing and it wasn't uploaded because it was just timed in.
And for those of you that don't know, Charlie Wynans was our county attorney for many, many, many years. I think Charlie prosecutor for a while.
Yeah.
Start in the late 60s.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah.
I know, when I was EMS director, he was the county attorney. Grant Van Horn was the hospital attorney, and I was always between the two of them. All right. So with that, joint resolution of DeKalb County Commissioners, Resolution Number 2023-R-6, Kalb County Code 4-1-3-38, and DeKalb County Council, Council Resolution 2023 RCC-4, H. Charles Charlie Wynans Memorial. Whereas H. Charles Charlie Wynans was a true and faithful servant of the citizens of DeKalb County, serving as an attorney for over 38 years. And whereas H. Charles Charlie Wynans served his country by serving in the U.S. Navy. And whereas H. Charles Charlie Wynans spent his career as an attorney representing citizens of DeKalb County. From the time he graduated from Notre Dame University, was admitted to the practice of law in 1958, to his retirement in 1996. And whereas H. Charles Charlie Wynans served as the DeKalb County prosecuting attorney. And whereas H. Charles Charlie Wynans served as the attorney for the DeKalb County Commissioners from 1965 through 66, and 1979 through 1995. And he represented, he also represented among other entities, the DeKalb County Airport. Whereas H. Charles Charlie Wynans exhibited his vision and commitment to DeKalb County in helping to guide the county through the building of the county jail, creation of the Office of Public Defender, and the SDI Project. And whereas H. Charles Charlie Wynans exhibited his vision and commitment to the community as he helped to establish the first Boy Scout troop for the disabled, as well as the Wehaven Center, now called Alliance Industries, for the disabled. And whereas H. Charles Charlie Wynans showed his vision and commitment to the community by serving as the school board attorney for both DeKalb Eastern and Garrett Kaiser Butler School Systems, and helped to guide both through the building programs. Now therefore be it, now therefore it is hereby resolved by the unanimous joint resolution of the DeKalb County Commissioners and the DeKalb County Council that H. Charles Charlie Wynans be commended for his unselfish commitment, vision, and service to the citizens of DeKalb County over a period in excess of 38 years. Be it further resolved that the DeKalb County Commissioners and DeKalb County Council convey their sincere sympathy to H. Charles Charlie Wynans' six children and their spouses, as well as his 10 grandchildren and 10 great-grandchildren. Be it further resolved that the DeKalb County Commissioners and DeKalb County Council hereby declare April 10th, 2023, and April 11th, 2023, as days of official mourning for their departed friend and colleague, for the further, and further direct that the flags of our county, state, and country be flown at half-mast during these days as a signal to all of our respect for H. Charles Charlie Wynans. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread among the permanent minutes and records of the Kalb County Commissioners and the Kalb County Council, and that copies be sent to the family of H. Charles Charlie Wynans now that he has met his demise and joined his Lord and Savior, and that copies of this resolution also be sent to the surrounding appropriate municipal bodies in our county and the surrounding area, adopted and proclaimed this 11th day of April, 2023. And I have a motion to approve joint resolution 2023 RCC-4.
Go move.
Been moved by Councilman Van Y. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Yard. Discussion, comment from the public. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, that motion is carried. And let's get this passed around here.
I have a whole pile of stuff.
Okay. And that's what we're going to do. We got 40, 50 minutes to kill.
Okay.
Dave?
There's the rest of the stuff we've already done.
All right. Yeah, Bill's out in the hallway. Let's get him back in here.
Just one of our chairs don't work.
Yeah, that's, let's wait for Bill to get back in here.
Trust me, Dave, I had nothing to do with that. I was going to bring my snap ring pliers in to fix that.
Bill, while you're here, the council, and I'm assuming that it's most of us, maybe not all of us, but we request that the chairs be returned to their original operating condition. This is, this is unacceptable.
Well, I asked you to.
I understand why you did it, but I think we need to slap people on the wrists and get them up close to their mics, but we need to return the chairs to their original condition, please.
I appreciate it. I tend to back and then it gets.
Now I've got to keep moving. It drives me nuts. You're going to get me any closer, you're not getting me any closer with this chair.
He got some attention, didn't he?
Well, it did. Maybe that'll remind people to get up close.
If you have trouble hearing me, you have problems.
We have a number of other issues here. Let's see, we've done that. Don't want to get that at too yet. Randy's going to be here at 10:00. If somebody can get ahold of Randy and see, see if Randy can get here earlier. Humberger, if he can, but Humberger's also bringing the police chiefs from Butler, or from Auburn and Garrett. So that might be a hard one to get around. And Andrew, we told 10:30, so we can't move that one. Can we do the job classification committee recommendation?
Do you have Randy's phone number? I only have an email for him.
Oh, I do. And you said you downloaded his report?
I, yeah, wait a minute. Randy's, yes. They, we have a hard copy printed and I email it to everybody because I just got it. Yeah, he forgot.
Yeah, I had it here somewhere. Here, let me give you this.
Can I just text?
You want to do the job classification committee recommendations?
Yeah, let's do the job classifications now. Was Dottie coming over, though? I would think so.
I'm not sure, but we will have to wait for Bob Kraft.
Okay. Well, let's see if we can get Bob, let's see if we can get Dottie to come over.
Okay, let me ask.
If we can do that one early. I don't, we don't want to jump ahead with the tax abatement because people may be.
Or transfer requests?
No, nope.
They were just nonapproval?
Yeah, nonapproval ones. Yeah, we did, we did the two.
There was only two that needed action. Otherwise, they'd go from like the same series, service to service or?
If you're, if you're in the 300 series, to and, to and from, they don't need our approval. Same way with the 200, 300, whatever. Nonapproval transfer log has. The nonapproval transfer log has the auditor, the coroner, the elections, and the public safety.
I didn't make this separate one because all of our transfers, then when Carla does the like 303, 222, 222. So when Carla does the, I'm printing.
That's cheating if you get a chair, a good chair.
Summary, like what Amy has. Okay, show them what you have. So when Carla does the, so we have additionals that needed approval, then they're transferred, and then the nonapproval, she includes them on here so that you can see that these are the nonapproval. Those are just the requests.
That's cheating. Dave's going to want that chair.
So if they're going from the same number, then it's a nonapproval and you don't have to go from a three to a four.
No, I think this is the time, this is maybe the time you should, you should use your power as vice president.
Tony just says she's on her way.
Just confusing.
It's not a way, but doesn't have a nonapproval.
It's kind of like you and your husband.
And the reason why.
You've got money to.
Right.
All right. Are we? You know, one of the other, one of the other topics that we have in our council discussion, we can use this time to, as you know, we've talked about this in the past, we want to change the process that we have in August of the way the budget, new budgets or budget proposals for '24 are presented to us. In the past, we've had two days of repetitive, you know, the inflation rate and whatnot. It's the same thing over and over again from all the departments. And I think that our time would be better spent if we were discussing the actual effects of the budget, how we budget, where we budget, different, there are different things that we can do, that we can manipulate to make changes. You know, we tend to, everything gets put in this way and it just goes on in perpetuity. So I think we need to spend time talking. Now, the downside to that has been, and it's been, a number of people have talked about it, that that is the only time that they get to see a particular department head. And I, so I understand that that is an issue, but we also have other times that we can arrange to get them in here if we want to bring them in throughout the year and see and talk to them about their particular department. But I do think that we need to spend more time contemplating how we're budgeting and how we're, what our tax rates are. And so that is the time to do it, where we can have the day to discuss it and go through the entire process. Because we do have, you have property taxes, you have a number of local option income taxes, which we provided you back in February so that you could see what, what we're generating and how we're generating it there. So, and we can make some changes. But if we make any changes, we're going to have to do it before September 1. And it has to be done before September 1 because, number one, it has to be in place at the state level so that it can begin on January 1. But on the second hand, some of those things that we have local option income taxes on are divided up between the county and the cities and towns. And if we make a change, we have to notify them prior to September 1. And if we don't notify them by that date, then the change we make cannot take effect for another year. So we are, we have a timeframe that we have to meet. A couple of things that we need to discuss this, this next, in July when we meet, or in August when we meet. We've talked previously about the highway department being underwater in 2025, according to our financial advisor. So we need to consider what is going to happen there. Is a wheel tax possible? I know that Farm Bureau has talked about that. We are, again, the only one in the four county area that doesn't have a wheel tax. Is that a bad thing or a good thing? I don't, I don't know. We've always turned it down. I think we've turned it down at least twice, if not three times, since I've been on the council. And it was turned down prior to that. So those things need to be discussed and how it's going to affect different, different areas. The other is during our previous discussions with the building or with the highway department garage, it was brought up by at least one of the Commissioners that it might be a good thing to increase the community corrections facility tax up to its maximum. There is, there is about 0.07% that it could be increased, and that money put in the bank in a special account to pay for the future construction of a jail. We are under the constraints of our, our bill, our correctional facility tax was passed prior to 2019, so we're limited to 22 years that that tax can exist. So if we're going to take advantage of the 22 years, because it's my understanding from what I've read, it's not renewable. So if we're going to take advantage of that. So if we're going to take advantage of that, we need to start now and get that pot of money started. But, and I'll be the first to say this, I am not in favor of increasing our full, we have the ability to go up to 2.5% in local option income taxes. I'm not, I'm not willing to use the space that we have between where we're at now and 2.5% to get that correction tax in place. But what we can do is we can reduce the public safety income tax by exactly the same amount. So it would, it would be equal. We have the funds or we have the ability to do that so that there's not an increase in tax to anybody, it's just put in a different pocket. The issue will be is the fact that if we make that change, the public safety grant is shared with cities and towns. So they would lose money, but that money would be going in to pay for the jail because we do not share the, the correctional facility tax. So that's, that's an issue that has to be discussed and it has to be discussed in the open and in public so that we can, you know, we, we make the plans. Larry, Larry made a good point today in that we need to have, we need to be more forward thinking in our planning and we need to be more concrete in our planning. And so that, that is how I would like to spend the month of August when we talk budgets. I mean, they're all going to get their budgets, their deadline to get them to you is, what, middle of June? Oh, middle of May. So here we are, those poor folks are only going to have four and a half months to, to determine what their costs are going to be. And as crazy as.
Weeks. They have a week, they have a month.
Well, it's the end of the month.
A month. You said four months.
Well, they've got January, February, March, April, that's right. Okay, they got four and a half months.
Oh, I.
Of what, I'm talking about history, what they've spent.
Yes, yes, correct.
You know, most of the time when you do a budget, you do a budget based on at least a year and a half worth of expenses. And, you know, they can go back and they can pick up last year, but things are changing so much right now. They're going to be in a hard place as we are. Going to be in a hard place with, right now, inflation's running at 6%. There's, there's bills in the legislature right now that would, would require that our ability to increase our expenditures in next year would be limited to 3%. So we're going to be 3% in the hole if that passes. So we got, we've got to take time and we got to plan these things. And so those are things that need to be on everybody's mind right now because yesterday, I did go to the commissioners yesterday and as Dottie was presenting some issues that, that she was having recruiting some employees, seems that our ability to hire those people in those particular positions might be due to the fact that the pay is not high enough. And, you know, if we're limited in what we can get, how are we going to get those employees in here? What kind of increase are we going to be able to give? And we may have to focus more on those two areas to get their wages up and that, what's that going to do for the other employees? What's that going to leave for them? So we need to spend, again, going right back to my point, we need to spend our time debating and discussing and getting as much information about where we're going to be next year as we possibly can. With that, Dottie came in, unless anybody's got any questions right now on that? Yeah, we're going to come back to that. We've made Dottie come early, so we might get her, get her in here. All right, Dottie, let's, let's talk about the job classification committee. Yeah. What, 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 what you guys were doing and what you've sent to us?
Certainly. Well, we had, we had a lot of things on our agenda. The, we had some departments who wanted to make some changes with their job classification or their job descriptions, the first one being information systems. And that would definitely be one of those departments that Rick would be talking about where we are competing with the private sector and information systems, computer people are, you know, at a premium. In this particular case, it was our help desk administrator and the job has increased, has changed dramatically since the job description was created back in 2018, 2019. Just think about the upgrades and things on your laptops and your, you know, handheld brains, you know, known as telephones. So we talked about help desk administrator going to applications support analyst because that position does a lot more than just help people. The job classification subcommittee took a look at it. There was no reason to send it to Wagner, Irwin and Shealy because all computer, all IT positions are in special occupations, SO. So it didn't change the classification and it would not change the, the wages in, in that group. So it was, it was passed unanimously to bring that to council. You want me to go through each one, I mean?
If you would, please.
Okay, sure. The next one was our maintenance department. Larry Lane had been talking to you, he had already talked to commissioners about his succession plan. He is a one man band and the decision was made that, yes, he does need an assistant and he and I created a job description that did go to Wagner, Irwin and Shealy. The job description came back, the classification subcommittee did approve the job description unanimously. The classification was create, it was put into LTC, which would be more of our hands-on people, a lot of the employees out at Sunny Meadows and with the highway department because that's a hands-on position. And it will be an hourly, non-exempt position. Then the community corrections had a few. One was the simply a change in title. They're residential services facilitators, they would like them to be known as residential facility officer. It didn't need to go to Wagner, Irwin and Shealy, there was no change in classification, there was no change in wages. We did take it a second level, we sent it to the sheriff to see if he would have any objection to somebody else being called an officer. He did not. So that also passed unanimously. The, the other two that changed, that community corrections had were at the change academy. The first one being the juvenile education program, the coordinator. And that person is actually a teacher, must be a certified teacher. And so the job description needed to be updated. The, also the classification was changed. We, it went, it was bumped up from a COMAT position to a PAT, so it's more of a professional position. It is going to be salaried exempt because that person is a learned professional. And the department head asked that it be changed so that it would be effective July 1 because, as you know, community corrections budget is actually a July 1 start. So, and that was passed unanimously by the subcommittee.
And they indicated that they had the funds and budget to pay for that increase.
Yep, they do. And then we have a juvenile educational program facilitator. At the time when the job, the job description was created, there was a 30-hour college credit requirement in there for this position. Now, this position actually does the hands-on, not that the coordinator doesn't, but a lot more of the tutoring and the coaching of the individuals who are out at change. And at the time, that was the requirement for a substitute teacher. Well, those requirements have kind of gone by the wayside. So in order to be able to recruit more individuals, have a bigger pool, it's very difficult to find somebody who has the 30 credits and who would be willing to work for $16 an hour when you can get $16 at McDonald's. Editorial comment. Anyway, so that did go to Wagner, Irwin and Shealy for a, for a change. And so it was unanimously approved by the, by the committee to bring it to you. The last thing that we had for job classifications was the office administrator slash IDAX coordinator at the sheriff's office. When that job description was created back in 18 and 19, I didn't think that it was complete enough, but, you know, it was our, the first effort. Finally, with this new sheriff and the person who has that position, who has had that position for years, they finally put a lot more of the duties in place. So that information was sent to Wagner, Irwin and Shealy and it was, it just more reflects what that position really does. Initially, they thought maybe it would become a salaried exempt position. However, there are still an awful lot of hands-on, day-to-day sorts of duties that the person actually does. So it came back, they did change position or classification from COMAT to a PAT, professional. However, it is still an hourly, non-exempt position. So that was also approved unanimously by the, by the group.
And Dottie, did they, I think they said they have enough money in their budget to cover that for the rest of this year.
Yes, exactly. So they're going to make that change right after, if it is approved here. They have the money so that they can bump up the, the wages on that, which truly needs to be done. As HR has said for years, that person is the mother of them all over at the sheriff's office. She is the coordinator of all things that the officers need to be doing from the HR standpoint and just really now has two individuals who are, who work basically underneath her. But even that, those duties didn't quite make it a salaried exempt position. Finally, the job classification subcommittee discussed a topic that had been brought up a few months ago with commissioners. When the sheriff's office had a couple officers who were not able to utilize all of their PTO last year due to the very odd circumstances over there at that office, as you all are aware, and these individuals stepped up to the plate, put in an awful lot of hours and were not able to take their, all of their PTO. So it was brought to the commissioners, asking if they would allow them to carry it over more than just the regular 10 days that we currently carry over for PTO or if something else could be done. The commissioners decided to go ahead and pay out all of the, the PTO that they were not able to utilize last year and not able to carry over. Very unusual circumstance, as you are aware. That did bring up a question from Commissioner Sanderson, asking, well, why don't we just pay out PTO before the next allotment of PTO is granted or, you know, awarded to employees? Susan put together a huge spreadsheet describing several different scenarios, how much it would cost the county if we were to pay out individuals at, you know, you let people carry over 10 days and yet pay out whatever they hadn't used. Or you had to use 50% of your PTO and then we would pay out the other 50%. Just several different scenarios and it was just a boatload of money. And so anyway, discussion was held, we talked, we had about three department heads, well, maybe four, who were in attendance and they, their comments really were, we don't have an issue. Our employees can utilize all of their PTO. It would be a, you know, extenuating circumstances if we had to go before commissioners and ask, you know, could this employee, you know, we had this, whatever the, the scenario might be in the department. And so, ad nauseam, ultimately, it, it boiled down to, it's an awful lot of money to pay out. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. And so the, the request of the subcommittee is to, let's leave the PTO system the way it is. Individuals receive X number of hours on their anniversary, they have an entire year to use it up, or if they don't use it all up, they can carry over up to 10 days into the following year, but that is the most that they can carry over. It's not like it continues and they keep building up. The most that anyone could ever have is what they had been given on their anniversary date plus up to 10 days carried over from the previous year. So that in a nutshell is the Reader's Digest condensed version of what happened with the job classification subcommittee.
All right, the question I have is, I understand the difficulty in recruiting nurses. I mean, that, that I understand. In the highway department, what's, what's the issue there? Is it, is it a CDL license?
With the highway department, yes. Ben Parker requires everyone to have a CDL, including his maintenance people because the maintenance people, even though they are working on the vehicles in the shop, they still have to take the vehicles out and drive them. So they have to be able to, you know, do everything that they need to, to test the vehicle. So everyone except for their two office clerks have CDLs. CDLs, as you can imagine, there are, you know, ads in the newspaper, there are those little things that are at the intersection of every corner. CDL driver, come drive with us. That is really a difficult position to fill and Ben will have a couple retirements this year. So we do have our posting out and about, keeping our line in the, you know, in the water, as I say, just to, you know, hopefully, somebody who is disgruntled with driving an 18-wheeler over the road, having to go, you know, across the Mississippi River, coming back, having to drive in Chicago, whatever, hey, come here, plow snow. And have, you know, PTO time, have vacation, you know, have your holidays, make a decent wage and, you know, be close to home and basically be home every night. So that is the, that's one group. As I mentioned, the systems, our computer people, we're dealing also with the competition of the private sector. Every company has some sort of computers, some sort of information systems. And then the final group that we would be talking about would be our nurses. We have Parkview to thank for the inflated wages that we have for nurses, although it is a nationwide issue trying to find nurses. And it's, the health department has, they've wanted to put in place a succession plan. Cheryl is thinking several years into the future, but we need to, you need to be thinking about bringing up the right nurse to take over the health department and to keep, you know, keep that department running. And so she lost one to Parkview at $85,000. And what was that, a $10,000 sign-on bonus? And so we have tried to post for this position, hey, get out of the hospital, get out of the doctor's office, come, you know, once again, get days off, you have PTO, you get your, your holidays, you work 8:30 to 4:30, Monday through Friday. you work 8:30 to 4:30, Monday through Friday. Yeah, things like that, that you can't, you know, you don't get at the hospital. But people look at, you know, their paychecks. And that's just, you know, so that's been very hard. We've had that opening since December. And last week, we were supposed to have an interview. However, that person disgusted a little bit more with their family and decided that they just could not leave Parkview and the wages that they had there.
Have any questions for Dottie?
They still short one on the inspection side, aren't there, to dig that one?
Ah, they have that one filled. The, an environmental inspector will be starting next week. That one, we are fortunate. This person had worked for the State Health Department for about 30 years, wants to move home to Auburn, but continue working. And so, you know, yeah, those sorts of things just fell into place. And actually, her family buying a house in Auburn, and as most of you know, housing is at a premium, just that fell into place also. So she will be starting next week.
Well, I talked to Cheryl and she wanted to come in here and address the council, but Doc Sodder said not to yet, just leave it. He wanted to talk to her before she addressed the council. We have to be very careful, as she said to me yesterday, she's getting overwhelmed with her work with her second charge going to Parkview. And she had a $30,000 pay increase plus a $10,000 sign-on bonus. So, you know, and she has, and talk about retirement, there would be at least three, not four of them, be walking out the door within the next three or four years.
Right, exactly. Yeah, that's why I've been talking to department heads about succession plans. And that's why Larry Lane, who was going to succeed Larry, Clint? So that's why, that's why we started talking about it. Same thing with IT. You take a look at our IT department, we have a department that provides service. And we have one employee who is retiring this June. We have a couple others who are looking at December of 2024. That's an awful lot of experience. Those individuals have been with us for 20 years or so, trying to find people with experience who can catch on. And believe me, the more I talk to systems, the more I understand, this is a weird duck, you know, when it comes to dealing with the different departments and all of the processes that they need to put in place.
All right. Anybody else have any questions for Dottie?
Like 53, 57. Right, exactly. Like I said, yeah. Right, yep, pretty much so. I mean, rarely do they have the evening clinics, you know, that's very rare. Rare that they would, you know, have to work a weekend, but they need to be available for any sort of emergency that might crop up. But overall, yeah, like I said, I've been trying to push the, those other things that you don't get at either the hospital or the doctor's offices. And, yeah. And then, of course, we had CNAs applying, and that position needs to be a registered nurse. So, and believe me, we have posted at all of our local colleges, you know, hoping alumni, because newly minted nurses, not quite what Cheryl needs. Because we are talking emergency preparedness in addition to running the clinics and, you know, having those sorts of things. So, you know, a new, yeah, with some experience, exactly.
All right. Anybody else have anything for Dottie?
We have at least three of these that we need to vote on as a council. The committee does have authority to approve.
Right, I see they're at the end here. And we're gonna, that's, that's actually towards the bottom of the agenda, and we are going to actually wait on that, because we got Randy to come in early. So we're gonna get him in here just as soon as Dottie's done. Bill, you got something?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Just a little clarification on the CDL situation. It's mandated by the state, and those requirements become more complicated every time you turn around. So it's kind of the state pushing us into this corner. There is a problem getting these people with CDLs, because they can go somewhere else and make $35 an hour driving a truck for Brooks out here. I talked to Parker just the other day, we had a conversation about CDL training. And we might be to the point where we might have to provide some training to get these people qualified to drive these trucks. And the number, if I remember right, the training is going to run somewhere around $5,800 is what he's saying it takes to get somebody qualified to get their CDL. So it's become an ever escalating problem for, to hire these folks to, you know, and get them paid enough to bring them in, so.
Well, if that, if there is an opportunity to send somebody to that training, we have been trying to encourage our department heads in that to take the leadership training, which is, it's a costly venture, but it's well worth it. If we need to send somebody to training, I don't have a problem with that.
It may come, unfortunately, it may come to that. You know, they're not going to come to us with that training, because they can go somewhere else and get a better paying job. And we pay well and benefits are good, but still, that CDL is everything, and it takes some time and some money to acquire it.
A lot of companies pay for specific training and just make sure that we have an agreement. They have to work for us X number of years before they can leave.
It'd have to be, there'd have to be some strings attached to that, of course.
Whenever I drive by Ivy Tech on St. Joe Road, they have, they have CDL training, of course, at Ivy Tech. And so the 18-wheelers, the trucks are there, and people are, you know, taking those classes. So it's not that far away. Ivy Tech is right down there on the north side of town, and we could easily send people there. I did hear that the City of Auburn was contemplating doing some sort of training also. So we may be, we may be able to partner there. But, you know, in my previous life, I used to talk to the project managers about hiring, you know, some of the people who were coming out of the vocational high schools, the vocational colleges, and grow them the way you want them. And this is exactly what we're talking about.
Absolutely. All right. Any other questions for Dottie? All right. We're gonna bring Randy up, get him, get his over with, and then we'll take our break.
Sounds good.
Good morning, all.
Good morning, Randy.
I was just about to head out the door when my watch reminded me.
Well, we've gotten through today's agenda quite quickly.
It's no problem with me. Get in, get out, go home, work in the yard.
Well, the last two meetings have been to 1 o'clock, so we're looking forward to this early stuff.
Okay. Well, I asked Susan a question over email and forgot to attach stuff, so I hope she got it all out to everybody. The auction for the contents of the Meese Chapel Church starts this afternoon, actually, at 4 o'clock. The website is open, I looked at it last night. You know, once we took possession, once we closed on that, everything that was in the building, now we had to declare as surplus property. And so the auction's going on, and it closes on the 25th. I gave Susan the thing, and it's also in our briefing document. Just like 132 or 133 lots of items from the pews to some of the electronics and tables and chairs, and you name it, it's there. So, yeah, it's one, well, I mean, it's 132 different lots, but, and it's all online. There'll be nothing at the site itself. I don't know what they, when my mother-in-law passed, we had Little Johns do it, and they have a day where it's kind of crazy, but everybody goes and picks up all the stuff that they won. And we'll see what happens. But the property is ours. We really, again, still have no design on removing the building promptly. We've got the, kind of the next item on our, on the agenda here is the paving portion of the runway project. We went ahead and self-funded the fencing to go around the process. It's included in an upcoming grant that we're, we've applied for and anticipate getting. So we went ahead and used some of our rainy day money to fund the fence to keep all of the animals and stuff out. Airplanes are made to do one thing, go straight forward and up. And if they run into stuff, they don't fare well. And in my old days, when I was flying regularly, it was nothing to go into an airport and see a dozen deer standing on the end of the runway, because it's all nice, covered with grass and nice food, and they tended to congregate there. So the paving portion of the process starts on the 25th of this month. We are going to, and I'll bring a full, once we get the actual agenda down, bring the agenda in, but we're gonna shorten the runway. They'll actually displace the threshold out on the east end so that the construction folks won't be, have airplanes going 10 feet over their head. We'll move the end of the runway back considerably. So coming in from the west, it'll be normal landing. Coming in from the east will be adjusted. And then I believe it's the month of August when they're actually gonna put the pavement down. The runway's gonna be closed for 30 days completely. There'll be no traffic in and out of the airport whatsoever while that, while the pavement and lights are being placed and installed. So I'll bring a full agenda of that, so we'll have some change there. We did accept the bids on, or we took bids on the self-fueling system. And again, airplanes will be able to pull in, park next to the pump, put your credit card in, fill your aircraft with fuel. And you could do it at 2:00 in the morning if you wanted to. And it's gonna be lighted, all of the availability of service will be right there. Still, if they need something special, the fuel trucks will be there to do that. Once this is installed, we have two 10,000-gallon tanks for fuel on the airport right now. One's for avgas for light aircraft, one's for Jet A, for the jet aircraft and helicopters. Those two tanks, the one tank will be cleaned, refinished, and converted over to avgas. So we'll have 20,000 gallons of avgas available on-site, and then close to 10,000 of, or 10,000, 20,000 of Jet A, 10,000 of avgas. So we can take bigger loads of fuel and store it on-site and not have this, you know, order a new tank of fuel on the day we take delivery of the one we ordered last time, because availability is so difficult. So we expect that to done. Our tank is finished, sitting in Kansas City, awaiting shipment. We did vote to reestablish our cumulative building fund. That happens about once every five years. Don't quote me on this, but I think the rate is 0.0033%. And I'll be, and it was really just reestablishing that fund. Sweet Aviation, that we hired as our fixed base operator, has been doing a wonderful job. Their flight school started off, I think their first meeting had two students, and now they're up to maximum capacity. We've got students coming up from Fort Wayne to attend classes here, and they're adding new students to the flight school almost every week. So we're real happy with them. And we are adjusting our T-hanger leases, they haven't been touched in five years. The rates haven't changed. I think most of them are gonna go up by a, you know, 5% or 6% at the outside. And with that, I'll take any questions? Yeah. Well, the Meese Chapel, the fence actually goes around the back of the property, so it's already fenced. It has been, and that's, until the building is moved or demolished, whichever ends up happening, we're really not gonna touch that property. It was more a matter of owning it so someone else didn't get it and establish something that would be not compatible with airport operations, so. No, no, no. The taxiway, we call it Alpha, runs on the east side or north side of the runway. And it, right now, it goes down to the end. The extension of the runway, the 2,000 feet, does not include the extension of the taxiway. That would be next year. And so they'll, that's the next grant we ask for, is the extension of the taxiway and the rest of the approach equipment, the lights and the Mauzare lights and the glide slope.
Anybody else have any questions for Randy? Hearing none. Thank you, Randy, appreciate it.
Good luck with your short meeting.
Thank you for coming in early, appreciate that. All right. We are actually pretty close to being on schedule now, but we're gonna take a quick break, and let's try to be back in here by 10 after. That's when we're scheduled to do the tax abatement question.
I'm Jeremy Luter, one of the owners of Country Heritage Winery, me and my wife. As he said, we're looking to put a distillery, separate building, same campus. Start out doing, making some brandies and stuff out of our own wine, and then move into some other products. Corn rye, wheat will be grown on our property to use for that, those products also. Stage one, it'll come in stages here, but is, will be a pot still, more for doing smaller batches of stuff, with maybe possibly putting a column still in a couple of years down the road. There'll be a couple of rickhouses involved. As he said, the equipment's about that 1.5, excuse me, somewhere in there. But there's, most of these numbers that we're giving is probably on the lower end now, as everybody knows prices, everything's going up. So the longer the process takes us to move forward, the more the prices are increasing. But we're going to retain everybody we have now. And as he said, we're going to add at least that number of people. So I guess if there's any questions, I, that's pretty much what we're planning on doing. Yeah.
What's your timetable, Jeremy?
Um, so we're working through some things right now. We're, I would like to have been started by now. But with some of the stuff, we're working through the state fire marshal and stuff, some of their concerns and stuff. So best case scenario, I would think mid, mid to late summer, getting started, hopefully. As long as we can, like I said, get all these prices set to something we can swallow. Yeah, that's our timetable.
How many people did you say you were going to add?
Um, I think the number on there, I don't have it in front of me, was five total. I think, and like I said, these, I hate to say yes, because that makes me sound like I don't know what I'm doing. But I think that's going to be on the lower end. A lot of these, probably to start out, would be a bunch more part-time. But when we find those people, the full-time people right now to get the quality that we're looking for is kind of hard to come by. So right now, we're putting two part-time people in there and hoping one of them sticks. But if we could find those people, we would hire them immediately, even tomorrow, before we're even ready for that, just to keep them, keep them here. But we need, we need to find those right people. And obviously, it's not like this area is used to, there's, there's not like there's a bunch of distillery people floating around the area. I mean, people move in and move out all the time. But, and I'm not opposed to training those people either. If we have, if we have the person that comes in and, and shows the leadership and wants to learn. I mean, I took those classes myself over the last two years. So the classes are around, most of them are in Kentucky. But a lot of the, a lot of the businesses that, that we've been talking to, try to find the right person, then you send them the class to get the skills they need.
And this is to increase your winery? These buildings are increasing?
No, this is, has nothing to do with the winery, as far as the buildings go.
I got lost somewhere in there.
Um, I shouldn't say that. So some of the, one of the products we'll make will be brandy. So you take the wine and then you distill it to a different product.
Okay.
So if, if that makes sense, I guess. But no, not, it'll be two separate licenses. It's not even the same license. It's, it's kind of weird, but in the state, we have to keep it under the same umbrella, just serve in the same campus. Otherwise, it'd be a completely different business. If that makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense. I've worked with, with them before, so.
Yeah. Yeah. Otherwise, I'd love to have it two separate businesses, just to keep it separate for even tax reasons. But we're not allowed to ever bring those products back together for people to enjoy unless they're made in, under, under that umbrella.
Yeah, I understand that. Okay. Thank you.
Jeremy, what's your traffic now, as the winery stands alone? And I don't expect you to have this off the top of your head, like on a yearly basis.
A number of visitors?
Yeah.
Um, so we've been trying to track that. We switched POS systems, which tracks that. I should have brought the exact numbers with me. But I was telling them before, we're about 56% is actually new people that's never been there before. And the rest is, is visited more than once. But we're somewhere, somewhere around that 600,000 to 700,000 people a year range.
With the distillery, have you had any thought on what those numbers, it's new to the region, so.
It is new to the region. And, and moving down the road, I don't have the exact plans drawn up yet, because that's one of the things, they're still trying to decide where the building can sit. But there's going to be more parking lot added there also, upfront, more convenient parking. The, the distillery side of things, not going to be run like the winery, if you've ever been out there. We're not going to do like per se tastings as just anybody that walks in the street. It's going to be more of a planned experience where you get a tour slash tasting. So it's not going to be, it's not going to be the same amount of people, I don't think, is what, what that would be. If that makes sense. A lot, a lot of the distilled products is going to be more for going home, wholesale sold. Yeah. I, I'm hope, I'm hoping, at least talking to other distilleries in the state, which like I said, there's not a lot in the northern area, but most of those models are set off more wholesale than they are in-house sale. And, and it seems weird, because when we first started going down there, a lot, I, I thought like the, the bourbon side of things was more a sold-out market. But a lot of those are even going like in, a good friend of mine runs one in southern Indiana. And they, I mean, they're in the Canadian market, they're in the European market. It seems to be easier to get into those markets than it is a local area sometimes, because there is more hoops to jump through. But if you're willing to do that, it's a different market. If that makes sense.
Other questions for Jeremy?
You're just adding additional buildings, is that right?
Uh, yes, it'll be an additional building. Yes. One additional building for now, maybe another one for, for a rickhouse. I don't know if you guys have ever been on a tour, but they look more like a tobacco barn. They're unheated, uninsulated, just a storage building. I mean, with, with those kind of products, you want the temperature to swing. So it's not like a wine that has to be temperature-controlled. It's the complete opposite. The bigger the swing, the better it is. That'll probably be added later. We're trying to set this up more like something you would see in Kentucky, where it's more of a experience, more of a tour than it would be just some of the local places around.
You have, I think you said 40, 40 employees currently?
I.
Oh, sorry, 80.
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five. Okay, adding.
Part-time and full-time.
Adding about five more jobs.
That's, that's our, our best guess. That's, that's our, our best guess, yes. I hope it's more than that.
I think you said, I think in the, I think this total salaries sounded like it was about 800,000 a year you spend in salaries, is that right?
At the, yeah, at this location.
Yeah, at the current location, and adding, okay.
Yeah, not counting the other two.
All right, anybody else have any questions for Jeremy?
The, Jeremy, or maybe Anton, I don't know, maybe neither of you have this, but do you have any idea what the economic impact is of 600,000 people coming to our county for visitation?
I haven't ran, I haven't done a specific economic impact analysis. I could definitely do that for you, to see what that looks like, but it's no doubt that it's, it's a major impact.
Yeah.
I would say probably one of the more, one of the bigger draws that we have into DeKalb County across multiple events.
Anybody else?
The, the recommendations from the Tax Abatement Committee are included in your packet today. For the real property, it was determined eight years was appropriate. For the personal property, it was determined that four years was appropriate. This did elicit a discussion with, with the Tax Abatement Committee, because we now have the ability to manipulate or change the percentages. You know, you can do 100% for the first two years, and then increment it up after that, you can do all kinds of things with it. And it was decided by the committee that that probably was not the best thing to do, because you're going to get yourself in an issue with your, it appears that you might be playing favorites to one group versus a different group. So the decision was to basically divide the, the tax abatement over the, whatever number of years was, was decided, divided equally among those years without, as, as a standard, rather than trying to manipulate it with every new project that came in. That would be the, that, that was one thing that would help us in justifying the, the abatements that we gave, and not get into a debate with other, other groups. The other issue that is before us, and Don, I know that, I think that Susan had emailed you about this, and I don't know that I ever saw an answer. Jeremy's property has already been declared an economic revitalization area from his previous, do we need to do that again?
It had expired, I think.
Okay. So then that brings the que, the question that we need is the, to give Don, if it's our choice to do it, give Don the direction to prepare the ordinance for the May meeting to declare the property an economic revitalization area, so that we can proceed with the tax abatement.
And just for clarification, ERA is defined as an undesirable for, or an impossible abnormal development, which this, again, does not qualify. Probably have an amazing business there, and we're very grateful that you're in our community. I personally don't think that it qualifies for the ERA.
Okay. I'll make the motion, move forward on it.
All right, the motion's been made by Councilman Van Wy. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Yard. Further discussion? Comment from the public? Hearing none. All those in favor of directing the council attorney to prepare the ordinance to declare this an economic revitalization area, signify, let's do this by roll call vote.
Okay. Collins?
Aye.
Crosser?
No.
Dembski?
Yes.
Yard?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Yes.
Y?
Yes.
Jeremy, we'll see you again next month.
Sounds good, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Anton. All right, next on the agenda, Andrew Foster from Inspiration Ministries asked to be given some time to address an issue that we dealt with last month. So Andrew, if you'd like to come up and make a presentation?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm going to pass this out, if this is okay. This is a, this is a role of our current board members with their email addresses attached. You'll know many of the names, and they, because of their business, you know, relations, they weren't able to be here this morning, but have made themselves, every single one of them, available for comment or communication after this and in the future, as Inspiration Ministries continues its work here in DeKalb County. Well, we do appreciate the time this morning, and by way of intro, my name is Andrew Foster. I'm the CEO and founder of Inspiration Ministries. My wonderful wife Kirsten, and I and our four children live here in Auburn, here in DeKalb County. We're homeowners, business owners. We're invested in the good of this community. I've met a lot of you over the years, whether that be through church activities, maybe a formal principal at the high, the elementary school that I was at, but, but part of my point in that is that we are here. We are available, we've always been available for conversation and comment. And if there is something that I want heard this morning, most importantly is, I am not the man that I once was. I've been called, I've been qualified, and I've been commissioned by the Lord Jesus Christ to lead this organization in a way that reflects the heart of God, in its attempt to help everyone experience the opportunity for redemption, recovery, and restoration. Inspiration Ministries is here to help. I full well want to talk about the grant, the request that we made to the county commissioners. I apologize, I wasn't at the previous county council meeting, to be honest with you, I didn't really know the rhythm of things. And after watching it, I, I certainly didn't realize some of the roasting that was going to go on, until my texts and emails came to me saying, ooh, sorry, Andy, you know, people are speaking disparagingly again about Inspiration Ministries. I, I didn't know that was a thing. Watched the video and realized kind of what had happened. I wish we would have had representation. Again, I apologize, I wasn't there. But we're here this morning, myself and several others, that not only are a part of Inspiration, but that have been impacted, or are graduates, who are happy and want to make public comment about the services they've received through Inspiration Ministries. Don Stuckey, I do appreciate you commenting to cut off disparaging comments about Inspiration Ministries without us having representation in the last county council meeting. That means a lot to me. Personally, it means a lot to our organization. I wanted to address a couple of things, just from the last thing, and then I want to be able to talk about the present. If I'm being really honest, it's, it can be frustrating. It can be frustrating in this community at times. Inspiration Ministries has received, in the last two calendar years, 2.25 million dollars in grants, to impact people in recovery, and to impact people in housing, and to impact people engaged in the criminal justice system. Nobody seems that excited about it. I'm a pretty excitable person. If you get to know me, I'm excited. I get excited about what God's done in our community. I get excited about these men and women that are here, transform lives. It's unbelievable, the stuff that's going on. And then when we make requests, or we get grants, we get a $600,000 grant to build two recovery homes in the city of Butler. And the mayor of Butler gets a phone call from one of our criminal justice providers, saying, ooh, I want to warn you, they don't let us on their property, which is a lie. That we maybe harbor people and don't make them turn themselves in on warrant, which is a lie. It's so frustrating. And then now the people that know us, Mayor Mike Hartman, he calls me, and he says, yeesh. I say, Mike, I don't, what do you want me to say? I appreciate, Mike, because you know what his response is? Andy, you don't have to say anything. I don't believe him. We've gotten to know you, and we've gotten to know this organization and its investment in the city of Butler. Appreciate Mayor Mike Hartman. I'm not 100% sure, and, you know, Mike, I appreciate you, Mike, I, I don't know you personally, I'm not, I'm not mad, I, I watched the video, I wasn't sure what you were communicating. He stood before you, and I think created some doubt or some confusion about how the grant process was working. I, I didn't quite understand. Just a couple of weeks prior to that, we made a presentation. In fact, Mike and Bill and Todd, they, they actually came up with the amount. I didn't, I didn't even come up with the amount. But all of a sudden, it was Inspiration Ministries is asking for $25,000, and they voted three out of three. We walked away saying, yeah, this was great. We have four weeks to put this application together. It was, frankly, it was super tough, like to make the rounds, and the vacation, there was a vacation or a holiday in there, and we didn't have a lot of time, but I was thankful for that. And Todd told me, well, we don't appropriate it, the council appropriates it. And I was like, no problem, that's great. But we had a letter signed by Bill, and, and we put it in with the application and all of that. And then I watched the video, and it's, hey, there's doubts, and there's questions, and Amy, I appreciate your questions, and frankly, you didn't really get an answer. It was, what changed? And it almost sounded like there was talking on behalf of some of the mayors and the council of, well, the support of the project, and I've talked with those mayors and town council members, and there's absolutely no wavering in their support of Inspiration Ministries. Again, Mayor Mark, Mayor Mike Hartman said, doesn't represent the interests of Butler at all, in our $10,000 donation to this grant and our participation in this. I talked to Bill, I talked with Todd, I was like, geez, guys, I didn't, something happen? And they both said, nope, not that I'm aware of, didn't, didn't. The comments that were made don't represent the county commissioners, but it certainly seemed like that, like it was this overarching comment that seemed like there was questions and doubt about the things that were going on. So I guess I say all that to say, I wasn't sure what the agenda is, and maybe he wants to clarify that. And I, I appreciate, I think he said a comment, well, I, I appreciate what Inspiration Ministries is doing, I guess, I, that's great, I appreciate that. We, we don't necessarily do it to, we do it to impact people. We've seen incredible things happen in this community. I don't know how else to say it, besides the fact that we are passionate about serving people. We will work as hard as any organization that you will ever have in this county. Work in an effort to raise money, to create assets, to train people. We've got 30 staff. Most of them are certified recovery specialists, we have licensed clinicians on our staff. There's talk about our recovery program and things that we do. I don't know if you guys know this, but in DeKalb County, the Northeastern Center and the Bowen Center are what you consider community mental health centers. Incredibly important, they're designated by the state. They have licensed clinicians, and they perform substance use services and mental health service. Incredibly important, incredibly important, they do a great job. Besides them, Inspiration Ministries is literally the only certified addiction services provider in this county. We provide treatment to people, not just programs, treatment. 85% of the folks in DeKalb County, when they're arrested, 85% are arrested because of drugs and alcohol. 85%, real number. DeKalb County Jail inspectors report, real number, 85%. They need treatment. They don't get treatment in this county. One of the most frustrating parts of our job is that, when people are sitting in jail or in the community, they want to come to our program. They fill out our application, they sit through an, or, an intake process, and it's grueling. We don't have many beds. We don't have many beds. We're 80 to 80, 90% occupancy, all the time, all the time. We don't have many beds, you got to be pretty serious. And we do this intake process, and we say, Amy, we think you're going to be a great candidate. We're all for you. We'll advocate for you, we'll fight for you, we want to see your life changed. And then they call us. And they're in tears, or they come and visit us, and they're in tears, because they say, oh, the justice system said I can't come to your program. Their parents are tore up. Decades, decades of substance use, decades, decades, that's not changed in nine months. There is no foolproof program that in nine months, people just walk away scot-free. It is by the grace of God that people are experiencing recovery and restoration, and seeing change in their lives. And again, we have testimony of that. It is not just a nine-month program. There are people that are desperate, they want help, and it breaks our heart. We stand in courtrooms, and we say, yeah, we're here to help, and then they get told no. And it's not just that they get told no to come to our program, they are getting denied treatment. They are getting sent other places, and they're not getting treatment.
Andy, your time's about up. Okay.
So with that said, we want you guys to be excited about an opportunity to partner with us, $25,000 on a million-dollar ask, on a million-dollar ask. We want to take your $25,000, we want to double it. That is our goal. It wasn't just a pay the light bill, we want to double it. Enhance services, develop some homes, serve men and women in this community. We desire to have your partnership. Metrics that you want? We'd be glad to meet any metric you could possibly ask for, anything. We keep a lot of data. Some say, well, the data, I can show you the data, they live in our community, I can listen to by name, I can bring them here. That's not, just not numbers, it's people. We do, we want your partnership so bad.
Andy, draw to a close, your time's up.
Okay. Thanks for the opportunity you shared this morning.
Now, before you sit down, anybody have any questions for Andy?
Question, Andrew?
Yes.
You talked about providing treatment that nobody else in the county has.
So when people are struggling with substance use disorder, it's an actual disease, right? They, they have assessments, and so they're met with clinical addictions, councils, counselors, doctors, but their treatment plans are created. When people have a struggle with substance use, there's a treatment plan, and then there's interventions that are a part of that treatment plan. They're going to classes that are led by licensed professionals, so they're having follow-up with licensed professionals. They're experiencing treatment with a plan and a follow-up with licensed professionals. That, that is not really the case here, in, in our county. And I, and I, and I mean it, I do not want to speak disparagingly of any other program. We have wonderful programs, but they're not all the same, they're not all qualified the same, and they're not all certified the same. But the services that we provide, when people come in, we're providing treatment plans and follow-up with that treatment, along with programming and a job skills training and different things like that. So our program is, is kind of past the more than a nine-month drug and alcohol program with classes. It has evidence-based best practices, certified by the state of Indiana, our homes are certified by the state. It's a process that the Division of Mental Health and Addiction has created. We are certified by the Division of Mental Health and Addiction as a, a certified addiction services provider, because of our staff, our licensure, and the people that are involved. So those are some of the differences that you'll see in some of the programs. Again, we have programs, wonderful programs and people, but when we're talking about substance use disorder and treatment, people need to be intersected with treatment with licensed professionals.
Anybody else?
I had a question on, and I could have missed this, because I was trying to think it out and write it down. You have 30 staff?
We do.
And what kind of certifications do those folks have? I mean, have they been through the programming themselves, are they mental health? I'm not familiar with your organization, so educate me, please.
Great question. So out of those 30, and I think we have a few more even part-time staff, I think the last time I looked, we have about 25, what is called a certified recovery specialist, or a peer recovery coach. It's a designation by the state of Indiana. It's a service that's billed by Medicaid, so it's a professional service, but you become a peer because of your lived life experience. But you become a peer because of your lived life experience in either recovery or mental health. And because you have been able to overcome that, then the state offers a training to be able to become a peer specialist. Over the last five years, peer, certified peer supports has been one of the most important things that's been implemented in treatment over these last five, eight years. Peer support specialists are being hired by the Northeastern Center, the hospital, Bowen Center, because these men and women, which are some of these men and women here, in here, they have the ability to come and infuse a different kind of hope into the lives of the clients that we serve, because they're able to look at them and say, "I get it, I see it, I've been there, but let me encourage you that you can get through this." Peer supports play an incredible role, but they do play a different role than a licensed clinician who's a doctor and has a bit of degree of separation and doing the diagnosis and doing the assessments and creating the treatment plans. Peer support is an intervention, it's an intervention that is put on a treatment plan that we want you to meet with a peer specialist once a week. We want you to meet a case manager once a week. We want you to be in substance use class three hours a week, whatever that looks like. But I would say 85% of our staff has some sort of licensure or certification by the state of Indiana. And we have three trainers on our staff in here in DeKalb County. So we do a certified peer recovery specialist training a couple of times a year. So we're training not only people within Inspiration, but we've trained in other organizations over the last several years, 20 to 40 peer specialists that are impacting DeKalb County.
So are a lot of those folks people who've already been through your program?
A lot of them are, yes.
Do you do, and I know a big thing with the courts and keeping folks on track with their interventions, do you do drug testing?
We do.
At your facility, okay.
Yep, our electronic health record has a randomizer, and so we do random drug testing, and it pops up in red and do all of that. We work with Redwood Drug Testing Agency, or whatever it is. But if we have questions, then we're able to send it in and get results from them.
Have you ever done like a cost analysis as to how much your program may be saving the county or by saving the state by going this way?
Yeah, I appreciate you asking that. Though I don't have a perfect number, we recently contracted at the end of 2022, 2022, yes. We contracted a PhD from Purdue University to start some of that cost analysis for us. We create some data. Some people have a hard time maybe believing that data when we create it, so we've actually contracted somebody to help us put that together. A common number that's attached to the criminal justice system, I'll say approximately, call it 50 bucks a day, it costs the criminal justice system. Maybe more, maybe less, you know, depending on the engagement, jail, court systems, probations, different things. Call it 50 bucks a day. And so, again, I've got these wonderful people in this room here. A good friend of mine, who I went to school with back here, Jeremy, probably a couple decades of engagement in the criminal justice system. How many throughout that month? We could probably quantify the number of days that he was incarcerated, that he was on probation, that he was in prison. We could take that, we could just do the math, times 50. Well, Jeremy's going on three years of no engagement in the criminal justice system, about to buy his own house, he got his daughter back. And so there is absolutely a delta. In our very preliminary, Dave, and I mean it preliminary, we're easily over hundreds of thousands of dollars that are saved in this county by people experiencing treatment and restorative services. And not just us, and I do mean that, it's not just Inspiration. The grant, you know, is ours particularly, but we have wonderful organizations that are doing good work. One of the things that you may hear this morning, or that's, it's important to keep in mind, there's still actually not enough. I mean, you give us the 25 grand, and we're gonna go build these houses, and we're gonna do stuff, and then we're gonna go, "Okay, what's next?" Because the waiting lists are super long, they're incredibly long. Now, when we don't use Inspiration Ministries, you know, that makes us feel bad, and we don't like that, but the reality is, we're just sending them outside of county. I mean, we're just sending them other places. We're just sending them to Fort Wayne and St. Ben, and, I mean, that's what we do. We want to be able to have capacity in DeKalb County to serve, you know? So frankly, there's just not enough beds. We want, and it's not enough services, so we just want to be a part of helping, develop more services so more people can be impacted, and we think the numbers can be down. And we just happen to be like a group of people that, we really think it's achievable. I don't think that, I mean, it's been decades, right? We know that. I don't think it has to be decades and decades longer. I think that we can get in front of it, and people can get services. I think people can be well.
Andy, you and I were at a meeting that too long ago when somebody was talking about the secret sauce, I think, or whatever, in your ministry and another ministry that was there at the table. And, you know, I spoke to it, and I think you can affirm this and maybe talk a little bit about this, but it really is the fact that you're a ministry, that you're offering that hope of, and you offer faith, relationship, love, and accountability.
Yeah.
And that's what's really making, that's kind of the sauce that makes the difference. You're talking about a lot of programs and a lot of technicalities, but the reality is, to change lives, you gotta deal in those areas.
Yeah, I mean, as a former incarcerated person who was a felon, who was on probation, by the way, a successful story of DeKalb probation. I had the experience of being a felon and having a hard time getting a job, getting housing, trying to create connection, I mean, all of that. And when we serve men and women, I mean, they are absolutely struggling with substance use. But 80% of the folks that come to us, they don't have a driver's license, they don't have sufficient transportation, 0% have a job. 85% of them are engaged in the criminal justice system. 75% of them are parents who probably haven't even, like, engaged with their children forever. So like, the step one, yes, let's not do drugs and alcohol. And then there's the holistic approach of job training, reconciliation, transportation. We get about 50 cars donated a year to our organization. We have a four-bay auto shop, I got a certified mechanic in this room. And we work on those cars, and we put them in the hands of men and women so that when they graduate the program, they can go to work. In 2019, we were kicking butt, and we had a lot of graduates, like 60%, it was crazy. And one of the things that was struggling is that we had people returning back to the criminal justice system. We didn't like that, recidivism, important term, everybody talks about recidivism. Don't ever forget that. And we were like, "Sheesh," and so we'd visit them, and we'd say, "Well, what's, gosh, what happened?" And they were like, "Well, man, I finished the program, but I still didn't have anywhere to live. I went back to my baby mama's couch, and I went to my mom's house, and I didn't have my driver's license, so after two weeks, I didn't go to my job, and then I lost my job, and then I lost hope, and then this downward spiral happened all over again." But we said, "No way, we're changing the tide on that." In 2020, and since 2020, we've invested in, I don't know, six, eight properties to develop this supportive housing model to extend the stay past nine months. And we've offered that to the Serenity House, the Harton House. We have some of their graduates that have come and lived with us, and it's amazing! It's amazing! We're going 24 months to three years of people doing well in our community. They're doing great at jobs, they got their kids back, they're going to Eastside, they're going to DeKalb. I'm telling you, it is amazing to see the impact that these folks have. So yes, the secret sauce is that we love Jesus, and it's faith-based and all of these things, but we help people in every aspect of their lives, because when they graduate the program, we want them to be sustainable. Don't come back. Since 2020, we have graduated 74 individuals since 2020. We've already graduated nine people this calendar year. That puts us on rate for nearly 40 graduates, 40 graduates. And since 2020, we have only had eight return back to the criminal justice system. It's 11%. Now, believe me, I know full well that somebody could recidivate tomorrow, and then it's nine out of 74. But I'll tell you what, we have to have a lot of people recidivate before we get to even close to our counties and our states' numbers for recidivism. We've been incredibly blessed to see the number of people be successful in our program. And they feel cared about, they're a part of our communities now. They're on city councils, I got a guy that didn't graduate our program, but six years clean, he's a pastor of a church now. I mean, these people are buying their homes, you know, it's really pretty incredible.
All right, Andrew, well, first of all, I apologize for not calling you Andrew earlier, but...
No problem.
You might not have noticed, but I did. We do have other people waiting, so at this point, I know that from the last meeting, number one, this council was not aware of what the requirements were within the opioid settlement. It is a large dollar amount over the course of some 30 years. Those guidelines are now out across the state. All of the counties are attempting to put their money together with the local community's money, because some communities, like a St. Joe or a Corona, will have a very small amount that not a whole lot you can do with, so everybody's trying to pool it together. I believe that the council, and council, correct me if I'm wrong, one of the issues we wanted last time was, let's see if the money gets put together and then what the determination is as to how it should be spent. I did meet with, after the last meeting, I did meet with one of the judges, one of your board members, and the chief of our probation department. And we learned about each other. I'm not sure that it changed anybody's mind, one way or the other, but we did meet and discuss the issues. But I think what we would like to see, or what I would like to see, is, let's get the money put together, let's designate how it's going to be used and where it'd be best used before we start giving out any money. That's where we're at right now.
Okay.
All right.
Is that like a, is not a vote or anything like that, since it came from?
I mean, we can vote on it again, if that's what this council would like to do, we can vote on it. I think that's what they've been attempting to do, is put the money together and get some kind of budget of how we're gonna spend it over these 30 years, because we're talking...
Is that the J-Rac committee, or is that towns?
No, I think they were trying to put something together, much like the COVID money. Or they, the committee that you were on, and get the different individuals from different towns and that.
The commissioners are.
Input. I think just Mike Watson's the only one that's been working on that.
And again, I understand the communication, and I do appreciate that. And I full well believe in collaboration, 100%. It's a lot of money. I mean, let me remind you that the city of Butler have already, they've already cut the check. St. Joe has already cut the check. Garrett has cut the, they're not waiting. They want to collaborate, they want to be a part of it. But again, what you're hearing, what you're hearing is not the voice of all, and there's not a plan. And so I want to see that collaboration, and that's maybe why the city of Butler only gave us 10,000. That's why Garrett maybe only gave us 4,500. But they, it's not an either-or. That's really what I want you to hear, it's not an either-or. It's not pull all the money together and do this thing. It's not even competitive money. It's just discretionary money that was given to enhance recovery services in the community. And so because of the opioid grant matching thing, again, the opioid money is different than the opioid grant match that we applied for. We wanted to double some of that money. And so I full well, opioid money, collaborate, bring all that money together, and let's kick butt for the community. We had just put together a grant proposal, raised a million dollars so that we could ask the state for another million dollars, and some of the municipalities, part of the requirement was a buy-in, a buy-in. The dollar amount didn't even actually matter, it was more of an authorization. And the city of Butler, St. Joe, and the city of Garrett all bought in and then made a financial commitment. So from their perspective, it's, I'm just trying to communicate that it's not really either-or. It really is a separate proposal that says, "We have this proposal, we want you to be a part of this proposal, but we're all in for this as well." Like, whatever this collaboration looks like, we're willing to come and be a voice and an influence at the table, we're willing to even be an investor in the thing in that.
So are you saying that those municipalities put in their own money from a different source than their opioid settlement money?
Some of them, I think, used opioid settlement money. It was marked on their sheet. But like, city of Butler is gonna get $42,000, give or take, maybe that's restricted funds. Well, they decided to get $10,000 out of that, like, that was their decision. We want to invest in this, we appreciate Inspiration Ministries, we're in this proposal. But full no well, speaking with Mayor Mike Hartman, he's a part of these meetings. And he's like, "Yeah, I'm gonna go to the meetings, and we've still got money. We want to take it to the table for collaboration." So again, it wasn't necessarily either-or, it's really just, it's kind of a both-and in this situation. Can we collaborate? But we just happened to put the application together in four weeks, which was challenging, but we did.
Bill, can you come, can you speak to what the commissioners voted on and decided that they were, are they recommending to the council that we invest in this?
Yeah, we recommended this unanimously, and the money's there, it needs to be spent on this kind of project. They're gonna double this money. And I've heard a lot of rumors, innuendos, statements made that I have no way of verifying them to be truth against this ministry. I have been to their, several of their events, I've witnessed the things they do. I've talked to Andy several times, different members of the organization I've talked to. And I see no reason to change my support for this organization. And until somebody brings me evidence, hard proof of these accusations that are flying around, I will continue to support them. And I think, you know, we can do a committee, we can do a lot of talking, we can do, they... I don't know what that accomplishes, to be honest with you. I see what they accomplish. So I recommend that we make this, approve this donation to this, to Inspiration Ministries so they can move on with the work that they do.
I have another question for Don. So Don, is this in our purview to recommend or to appropriate this fund? If we had a motion?
Okay, so that's what I was gonna get to. I have a couple things to say. One, if the council's voting on anything today, it's only gonna be voting on whether you guys think you're going to do this, because there's not been additional advertised, and there's not been an additional appropriated, nothing's ready for that, because we're not to that point. The other thing I want to say is, the commissioners meeting that this was brought to, I was not in attendance. I had emailed Attorney Cruz, and I had requested that he really advise the commissioners not to make an actual dead-set motion that day because the listing of what the approved uses could or could not be were not known yet or even out to be able to be reviewed. And, but from my understanding, either the deadline for his grant submission had already passed or was like the next day or something, that there had to be a decision made that day. So the motion made was that the commissioners agreed to it contingent on if the council would allow that money to be coming, to come out of the opioid non-restricted allotment. So we're not in the place to vote.
You have to appropriate the money, you have to advertise to appropriate the money.
So we're not in the place to vote today.
Can I make, I'd like to make a motion that we advertise to appropriate the $25,000 to Inspiration Ministries out of our opioid unrestricted funds.
Absolutely second that.
And I do want to speak a little bit to the character, because I wasn't here the last time. But I've worked with Andrew for five, seven years in what I do at the YMCA, and never one time, not one time, has Inspiration Ministries ever done anything out of line, ever even made any ruffles with the YMCA. They come, we allow their people to come to the Y on a regular basis, on a weekly basis, use the YMCA as part of that caring, loving relationship building that these peer people do, and it makes a huge difference in people's lives. So I don't see, I've never seen anything, I know there's been a lot of talk about way in the past. Andy's a very, Andrew is a very, very passionate person. You can't help but, you know, know that he's all about what he wants to do. But that's, it doesn't make, you know, anything wrong with that, you know? I just really, really support what Inspiration Ministries does, and I believe in it. And I think with the money that we put in to match grants from the state for highways, where we're getting, we're putting $200,000 in to, you know, get a million dollars, if we're running $25,000 and it helps them get a million dollars, that's a fantastic return.
I would second that, Bob, and I would say that...
I would second that, Bob, and I would say that I've seen Andy and the things that they do. And our church, Pastor Deal at New Hope has come beside them and completely, wholeheartedly supports them, has helped put a church in Butler. Uh, we went there actually for a Good Friday service. They're making a difference in the community of Butler, they're making a difference in people's lives and I completely, wholeheartedly second that motion. Thank you for making it.
I would like to see before we get too far ahead, what we can use this money for inside the government before we start handing out. I understand it's a one lump sum in front and then it kind of dies down as we go on.
Very much so.
And I'd like to know if there's something that we could assist our, our probation officer, our community corrections, even our officers, our sheriff's department before we start handing money out to a church.
Absolutely. I would also advise, as I said, I've met with, I've, I had lunch with one of the judges, one of their board members and they had a probation. I would suggest that each one of you have that same discussion with those, those department heads that are our charge. So I have a motion, I have a second that we approve, that we advertise. It's not the approval, it's the advertising.
Proving me to advertise, I guess.
And then in, in between now and the next meeting, um, let's, I, I don't know if we all got, if, did we send out the entire guidelines to everybody?
I can send it again.
Okay, send it again, please. Anyway, I have a motion and I have a second that, that we allow the advertising of this, of these funds for appropriation the next meeting. Uh, let's do a, let's do a roll call vote, Susan.
Rick, can I ask you a question?
Okay.
By advertising it here, guidelines, we're not in no way committing or anything, it's not sort of precedent or anything, all of this is?
I don't think so. I mean, we're, we will actually vote on whether or not we do the additional appropriation next month after she advertises. So you can vote yes or no.
Don, I don't even think we need a motion for this, I just need to advertise it.
Well, I think we need to have direction here.
Oh, okay.
I think you need to have direction.
Okay. Perfect. Roll call? Oh, wait, Rick wanted to say something.
Yeah, I did have another question. Rick, how do we get to what you mentioned earlier where we look at, here's the amount and here's how we're going to appropriate this as a whole, not just?
We've got to have, we've got to have the, the different communities come together. I just, I pulled this up here real quick and, um, Altona over the 30 years has 2,200 and 950, um, the largest amount versus other than, uh, DeKalb County is Auburn, they're getting 260,000, 262,000 and 112,000. So somehow we've got to get these, these numbers and get these towns together and let's.
What's DeKalb County getting?
Uh, well, I'm confused as to how this chart is written, but if it's, if it's what I see here, we're getting 493,000 over the course of the 30 years plus 211,000. But it almost looks like, is that got the other towns involved in it? I'm not sure of that.
So how, we don't know how much we're getting this year?
We haven't.
This year, yeah, how much you got in there this year?
The payment was delayed, like it was in Indy, but it didn't get, but I, I know they've presented and I've seen in the paper where they've received money so that, I mean, the cities have already appropriated part of their funding, this, that's how I've read it.
So has there been a delay? I guess if the other towns are already appropriating, why are we not? And I'm not, that's not an accusatory question, it's just a random question. Why are we not at that point yet?
Initially, in our conversation, like through J-Rac and our community corrections and that sort of thing, because I'm on the outside, that's not my profession, so I was asking a lot of those questions. Those guidelines were not out and the, the application process, and Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, because I know you and I spoke on this, that the application process was so short that they didn't even have a chance to look at, okay, this is what we can use it for, to get that presentation around, it just wasn't feasible in that time period.
But they did.
Well, I, and maybe they, I, I don't know if.
Was it, was it available? They didn't have the use system, it was made available. So there were webinars and there were meetings probably over the last 12 months that certain municipality members that, who were available to find out how the appropriation worked for all of them. The information was there for quite a while. The webinar that I watched was in February, I believe, um, the guidelines were set. I based our grant application on the guidelines of usage, specifically Doug Laughey, director of, of Cast Force in Indiana, Doug Hunsinger.
Yep.
Recovery residences, which was a part of our proposal, is actually a priority, one of the priorities for the grant, uh, as well as, uh, the, the grant was not a dollar-for-dollar grant, uh, match. However, they made a statement that if you were going to do recovery housing, it needed to have significant match. Uh, so that is why I worked to create a one-to-one so that we could be competitive, but it wasn't necessarily required. Um, and then again, the authorizations from the cities and counties was a part of the eligibility. If everybody would have said no, we wouldn't have literally, we, we literally would not have been able to submit the grant. But the fact that we had, uh, four municipalities, um, involved and then the commissioners, of course, even though it wasn't appropriated, um, had a fifth police, but we had four. So the eligibility, people appropriated money, um, and these.
Okay, wait, 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 wait.
Michelle, Michelle, can you come up here?
Thanks. So, um, the grant that he's talking about, where he was looking for the match is something that had about a four-week turnaround. And so the reason that we didn't have a chance or others in the system didn't have a chance to put something in and apply for that is because we were trying to work through J-Rac and some other channels on, how do we want to use that money collaboratively? Like we even had discussions of, could we use it with other counties? Could we partner with them to come up with something that helps our whole region? Because we all know that addiction, drug dealing, um, all these kinds of things don't stay within our county border, right? They don't stay within the town border, they don't stay within a county border. So if there's a way that we can do that so that we can partner with some other people is kind of what we were looking at. So just other options. There wasn't time enough for we to turn around to have something together for that particular grant that he has applied for. So if that was the question I think that was asked, that would be my answer. But what we're trying to do, and I think, um, that was what Mr. Watson was going to talk about too, is we're trying to see what can we do with the remainder of the money? So, um, the portions that the county has to spend to still do something collaboratively. So what does the whole system need? How can we use it best, right? I think it's a lot easier to write a grant proposal when you're the only one writing it and it's only your organization trying to figure it out. We were trying to do more than that. We were trying to get input from everybody, including those in our region, not just this county, to see what we wanted to do.
When you say the remainder of the money, does that mean above the 25,000 we're talking about for this grant?
I'm talking about all of the opioid money in general. So what do we want to do with that money? How does it best serve everybody? Where is it most needed? What's the best way to use it? And I think that's a question that is best put to a group of people, for example, J-Rac, I know has talked about it a lot, then it is, um, and I know also there's been meetings with mayors and different people. And I think that's a better way to make that decision than just having one particular organization think that they can come in and have the answer for everybody.
Okay, Amy, this is more for Amy Presser, but Amy, Amy. Your question about the uses and appropriation, I can tell you, one, we didn't have this information when we did the budget during last year for this year. And two, I, I personally was not aware of the document being out of the uses until maybe February, if that. Um, and that's even with all of the guidance and whatnot that I received from the state, from my other fellow 91 auditors, all of that. So I also wouldn't have had the information to even provide to you guys to know what those appropriate uses were until later. And then since it wasn't done during budget season, that is where now we have to appropriate it when we're ready to, ready to use it. So that's, that's why from my standpoint, from providing you the information, that is how it unfolded on my end from when I got it.
So we still don't know exactly the amount that the county is going to receive, if we are going to be able to disperse, correct? So I think we, it sounds like we have two different things. So we have one group of people who want to collaborate and within the justice system work their thing. Andy and his, it's a different piece. I don't know that they always work together because it is a very different organization. And so are we waiting to see, okay, we have, let's say we get 75,000 for the county, we have 25,000, can we give that to Andrew? And then there's 50,000 left over.
So we're getting, okay, so like for 2022.
And is the deadline over already? I mean, can the social or can the community corrections and those folks, do they have time to put something still together to get those funds?
Whatever grant that Andrew did, that's over.
Same thing, okay.
I thought your deadline was when you were here.
The deadline passed unless they extended it.
No, the grant's over, yeah, the grant's, I think for the appropriation of the other one.
Right, your grant that you requested funding for, that part is done, which that's different than the money we're getting from the opioid settlement. So for in 2022, which was late in 2022, we got 44,672.75 of unrestricted money. We also got 104,236.43 of restricted money. Now come 2023, which we haven't gotten yet, we're going to get just under 8,000 for unrestricted and like 18,650,000 for the restricted part. So the numbers Rick gave ahead of time was we have the unrestricted amount in total over all these years will eventually equate to a little over 211,400. And then the restricted part would be 493,417.
How much of that, 44, then the 8,000 we get this year that's unrestricted, have we spent so far?
We have not spent any of our money yet because we didn't have the restrictions or the, well, at least I didn't, but I don't have that choice. But I didn't have anything to provide to anybody. And I can't appropriate until directed.
And you also have coming from probation and from the courts, requests for additional appropriations for drug screening and things like that, that this money could be used for. That it either comes from this or it comes from the general fund.
I believe it'll be coming from community corrections as well because our increase in drug testing was, I think, $2 and something a test, if I remember right. And plus they reviewed our contract and Michael was able to put that off until January 1st, but they wanted to raise it in April.
Yep.
So I, I mean, I think we need to keep that in mind. I mean, I would love to learn more about Inspiration. I know a lot about Hart and House. But I think we also just need to see what we have to use in, within our departments too, so we don't find a budget shortfall somewhere and we're scrambling to find, find funding as well.
Exactly. All right.
Okay, so you have, ready for roll call?
I'm ready for it if you are.
Okay, so this.
If somebody else wants to talk about something else.
I would just say one more thing. I own the property next to Inspiration. My parents live in that house, Andy knows that. Um, when people were nervous, um, I was one who went forward and said, don't be nervous. My parents have had zero incidents, zero incidents, um, and they're right on the property line. I mean, there's, you can't get a closer neighbor than them. And there's been never, ever an issue of noise of, you know, no one's stolen the yard ornaments or anything like that. I wished you would, so I don't have to someday, but, uh, so, I mean, it, it's, it's a great, I, I just, um, stand on, I wish we would look at our whole plan before we look at piecemeal in it. That's all.
Especially if we can make it stretch farther and go and help, you know, county departments help our ministry organizations and pull together. I mean, if we can utilize those beds and, and open up more space for more people, we all know there's a housing shortage.
Getting, getting the court system and the probation system to work together would be excellent, but, you know, that's out of our hands completely. That's up to the Inspiration Ministries and the different.
Sure.
Probation and things like that, so. All right, roll call?
Okay, Collins?
No.
Presser? Dembski?
I'm only saying no because I'd like to get all of our ducks in a row, but I'm not against the organization at all.
Yard?
Same reasons, Amy.
Craft?
Yes.
No.
Thanks, Bill and Rick.
No, no. All right.
It does not.
That is defeated. That doesn't mean it's dead. It just means that we're not going to advertise it for next time. Let's get the, let's get the, um, the information in here about what's available, how it can be used, what some of our other needs are, whether or not we can get the different communities together. Um, let's get some more information to us before we have to make a decision. Okay, all right. Thank you, Andrew. Now, Brian, even though I told you we were running early.
And we were at first.
You know, I, I needed to cut it off when two cops stepped in the door and started looking at me like.
Basically waiting.
Intimidation there. That night, I, I had, I had former Mayor Yoder come, I gave, I gave him the wrong time, so he's been sitting here for over an hour and a half, so.
Did anyone take her first?
Uh, that'd probably be a good idea. You guys want to take a, a short break before we go into this?
Um.
All right, I would like to. So let's be back here in about three or four minutes.
I was just going to give him my card because I want to learn more about his organization.
Okay, we need the sign put up.
Susan's office, get the chair next to him. Is this yours, Susan?
No, I've been getting some.
Unfortunately, unfortunately.
Cody?
Yeah.
Was Cody among?
No.
I have many, many, many.
I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know.
Cody?
Yeah.
Was Cody among?
No.
I don't know.
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 And a lot of it comes down to, we have to ask ourselves, what are police officers, firefighters, and EMS personnel's lives worth? They are definitely worth more than $175,000. And then, what is the life and career of a dispatcher worth? A dispatcher's career length is average of four years due to the stress levels. This move would reduce a lot more stress on our dispatchers. Free them up to do other things as far as help their coworker that has a barn fire going on, or the situation with Master Trooper Bailey. That was all hands on deck. Tiffany couldn't get in because of the weather, but she was on her laptop doing things. I was in the center, and three other people all came in. And then, Rick is aware of this. Span of control, as set forth by NIMS, the National Institute Management System, and FEMA, say the span of control is one supervisor and five resources. My dispatcher working the Auburn-Garrett channel right now is in excess of that. She has to worry about the supervisor, and every officer else on that channel. We've got to reduce that stress and load off of the dispatchers, and create a safer environment for the Auburn Police Department and the Garrett Police Department, so they don't have to wait on each other. I can't stress that enough. I've been on the road before. The last thing I would ever want to hear if I'm fighting with somebody is a denial tone because somebody else is doing a traffic stop, or somebody's reading a license plate back. We have to make this a safer environment for everybody, not just the people out on the road, but the people in the dispatch center. From, I ran a list of totals of phone calls, starting 2015 through 2022. In 2015, just administrative phone calls, we took 17,544 calls that year. The end of 2022, 72,844. Then, if you add in another 13,000 in 2022 of just 911 calls, so we're up in the neighborhood of $90,000, or 90,000 phone calls that they're taking a year. Just information officers want logged in our CAD system. If Chief Heffelfinger says, "Show me out at the courthouse," we radio log that, so we know where he is if we have to check on him. Last year alone, 429,361 radio transmissions that were logged. That's an awful lot among three or four people on a shift. Once you log it, okay, that's done, but I have to make sure I remember to check on Dave because he's on a traffic stop. Amy's out doing a welfare check on an elderly person. Rick, you stopped just to check on somebody with a flat tire. We have to make sure we remember to check on all three of you. That's one person doing that. That's not including the guys that are doing traffic stops, Operation Pullover, working special details, ACD, the fair, or anything like that. I know it's a lot of money, but we need to make it safer for everybody. We need to take the stress off the dispatchers. And I want to get this promise to the City of Auburn and the City of Garrett fulfilled. Former Mayor Yoder sat through these meetings, and I had Chief McCoy every meeting, "Where are we at on this? Where are we at on this?" And it was literally every meeting for about three years. Mr. Yoder's here just to verify that I haven't found anything writing on the separate channels, but he was there for those conversations and those promises made. So I would implore you to please find it in the budget to give us these two more staff members.
How about, you brought Cory and Gerald in. They have anything to tell the council?
Hey, Brian, for OWI. When you said 28,000, that was reduced overtime? You said you had, the salary would be 175, 178, 63,000?
63,000, we would save that because we would not have to cover that. And then, other random, you know, not having to call people in for OPO and these extra details would save another 28,000 a year.
Do you, in your budget, I can't remember, they have overtime in that budget?
They have some overtime, but you know, one of the things that always brings this up is the Operation Pullover, because each one of the departments gets additional money, grant money that comes from the federal government through the state, for their officers to run Operation Pullover. When that, when they're doing that, then Brian needs to put on another dispatcher, and that's extra, that's overtime. We cannot get grant money through that, through that program, because it has to be changed at the federal level before we can make that addition or change down here.
How long does that program usually last?
Cory, what, they run it pretty much all year?
All year. Go on a holiday.
Come on up here to the podium there, Cory.
Sorry, I'm Cory Heffelfinger with the Auburn Police. So usually, they do four to six blitzes a year. Right now is a school bus blitz. As a matter of fact, I did it yesterday. And so they'll do one around the holidays. Fourth of July is a big one for OWI's, Memorial Day weekend, Labor Day weekend. You know, just to go on a little bit more about some of the numbers per se. I started at the Sheriff's Department as a dispatcher back in 1995, '06? So somewhere, a long time ago, yeah. So, and I get it, it is stressful, but to give you some more numbers on this, if you took the two channels and separated them, right now, per se, I just counted our guys, with my admin detectives, rogue guys right now, I have eight people on right now. That's handling all detective calls, all the admin, and then the rogue guys handling the calls. Garrett, I'm guessing you have four on now? Normally four because you're shorthanded. So right there, if you separated those two channels and had, and it's dispatcher for each one, it is actually taking the mental side off of that dispatcher as well. Instead of handling 12 to 14 people, my second shift right now, we're so busy, we have to run four or five patrol guys, let's just call it a call to call. And he's right. I make our guys call out everywhere they go. I call out here at the courthouse, in case something is to happen, they know I'm here. We have guys go out to schools every day. And with somebody like McKinney-Harrison, that way, if an intruder shows up, we know we already have somebody there. They may be in plain clothes, but they call that out. Somebody goes to the hospital, Home Depot. They stop at Marathon to get, all these guys drink energy drinks now, but they stop and get one of those, they call out. So that radio traffic and volume has increased dramatically, but a lot of that is just because of the culture we're in right now with how law enforcement is. Fortunately, we have a great community that supports our law enforcement, so it's tremendous. But you have a major interstate that runs through the city and the county. You know, most people don't realize that that's almost a halfway point between Detroit and Indianapolis. It's a huge area where drug trafficking occurs. So there's a lot of dynamics that flow into it, just not because of the county we live in, but of all, everything else that flows here. Walmart, Walmart's one of the busiest Walmarts in northern Indiana. You know, a lot of people come here from Ohio, Michigan, all over the place. So, I mean, there's a lot of traffic involved. Take ACD Festival, give example, fair, I have 10 to 12 guys on at a time, just to handle the amount of calls and the volume we have at that point. That's where they have to pull people in for overtime or whatever else, and it adds up a lot of money. I get it, our budget from then increases, probably triples in that month. So, and I know budget is a major factor, but I think a big, a big risk assessment, not only to the mental health of the dispatchers, but also to the officer's safety and everybody else, I think it's vital, and it's time that this finally gets accomplished.
And if we all look at the, I don't want to, if I want to say the explosion of development just on the west end of Auburn, I believe, I was told just the other day, we've got three more housing developments coming in. The City of Garrett is going to get some of that, City of Auburn's going to get some of that, all the new restaurant facilities, it's only going to get busier, and if we can do it now, let's get ahead of it, because I do not want us to be behind the eight ball, because the thing that every dispatcher strives to do is bring everybody home at the end of the day. And if they are so frazzled because they've got 12 to 14 guys there trying to wrangle and keep track of, it's a recipe for disaster. It really is. And we really need it. It's not a want, it's a need, and I want, and it's a want to fulfill that promise. Sir?
Do you say that they burn out about every four years?
That is, the national standard is about four years. We are blessed. We've got people anywhere between just released from training to 13 years. Tiffany and myself, she's right around 20, and I'm coming up on 30.
What is the cost to train one of these new ones coming in?
The nice thing is, since we do all our own in-house training, I believe we had approximately $30,000 just in, it's in wages. We're not paying any additional training costs.
So if, if you get two more people, and you can extend this, you, you give these, the ones you have now more time off, or they don't have to work as often, if you got two extra people, wouldn't, what would you consider your cost in savings that if you keep them an extra year, maybe an extra two years, as a training to replace them? What I'm saying is, if you bring, what I'm trying to see, if you had these two extra people, and give, give, which would allow you to schedule more time off, or, or give breaks to more of your current?
It would definitely allow easier PTO time usage, and the dispatchers would be able to actually get away from their console, instead of eating at their console, or have to literally run to the bathroom, run right back. That would make life so much easier on them, and, you know, we do have a savings. It's not huge in the grander scale, but it's a well-worth investment.
Well, if you get longer employees, longer longevity employees, that saves your money all the way around.
Yes.
I think Allen County was going through some information with their dispatch, they're down on employees also, and one of the numbers that they addressed during the, during their meeting was that nationally, the turnover rate for dispatchers is 20%. We're, we're below that. It's, it's not, you know, we're not Indianapolis, we're not San Francisco or anything. We are below that, but it's still high, and that there's only about 2% of the people have the disposition to be able to be a good dispatcher. Because it's, I think you've had people that you've started, and they've just said, "Hey, this, this isn't for me. I can't, I can't do this."
Dottie was kind enough, was it less than 5% was our turnover rate? Less than 5%. I attribute a lot of that to our work environment. We have a council and commissioners that back us. I will say Tiffany and I do a fair amount to make the dispatcher's lives as easy as possible, and the work environment as enjoyable as possible, but like Rick said, 2% of the people in the world can do it. I'm sure Jody can probably, she could type me under the table, but can she type, talk on the radio, and listen on the phone at the same time?
Don't doubt my employees.
Yeah, Brian.
Well, I was thinking about, well, it depends on whether or not Bill Van Wyze in her ear on, on the phone.
Can you tell us the last time that there been an adjustment made in your office? It seems like we've had some discussion in the last five, six years since I've been here.
As far as staffing levels?
Yeah, but I thought it was about, around overtime, trying to cut over, because we had a lot, a lot of overtime.
Oh, we did?
We talked about something, but I don't know that we added a position.
We converted two positions to trainer positions.
Yeah, that's.
And we saved overtime money there.
That's what we did, okay.
But as far as actually adding staff?
We didn't add any. And how long has it been since we've added a position that, I mean, in your 20 years or 10 years or?
You and I have never added a position. So, I would say probably much my entire tenure out there, since we went out in 2012, we may have added one or two.
Well, the excess levy appeal was done in 2014, and that was when the promise was given. That has never been fulfilled, so there's not been anything added since then.
Brian, forgive me, I'm new to the council, so I got a couple of questions. If you can just entertain me on those. Seems to me like you've been under the eight ball for a while. This isn't new, behind the eight ball for a while. Yeah, I mean, this isn't just like, it's been going on, and you guys have been experiencing that, that type of thing. Has there been requests over the last couple of years for additional funds, for additional staff?
But budget wasn't right at the time. Probably two or three times we've asked, not just during my time, but from when Paul Brewer and Bill Hunter were here as well. But they weren't granted at that point in time.
And then, in the current work environment we're in now, are there people available? If there's only 2%, are there, are there people waiting?
Yes.
You have access to people that are?
Yes. Our last hiring process, we hired three. One just came out of training, one should be out of training shortly, and the third one is on the fence. But we have people that, that want to apply, and a lot of it has to do, doesn't matter what pre-employment testing we do, we have a program, a program called Critic Hall, where they actually put on headphones and listen to call scenarios, and they have to type. But no matter what we do, it comes down to, okay, Rick, you're in the seat. Now, now it's live, and, but we do have people that want to apply.
Thank you. That's my only question. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So open up, so I think the real driver behind this is the additional channels. Is that right? You want to add the two channels?
We want to split the Auburn and?
Split them, so that there's, so help me understand, because I don't. There is, you want to specifically set aside a channel just for Auburn, and one just for Garrett, and those channels would be open all three shifts, so that there's always a channel just for Auburn, and a channel always just for Garrett, so they never get that horrible dead, or whatever that tone is?
Denial tone, yes.
Denial tone, thank you. So that's the driver really behind this at this point is, is really opening up those additional channels, more than needing the additional staff? Are you saying you need the additional staff to have those two channels?
We have to have the additional staff to do that. Because if we do, if we don't have the additional staff, if you want to take a day off, now I have to call somebody else in to fill your spot, so we don't have to say, Auburn and Garrett, you have to be back on the same talk group again today.
So you can't take some of your staff that you have now and say, "I'm going to designate you as just the Auburn channel from now on, and you're just the Garrett channel."
No, not reliably.
Why? And I'm not trying to be accusatory, I'm just really asking the question of why can't that be done?
Because if somebody takes a PTO day, either we have to increase our overtime, or we have to tell Auburn and Garrett that they have to come back and work on the same channel. And most of a dispatcher's skill, along with police officers, is muscle memory.
Okay.
And if I tell you today, or if the last two months you've been working on your own talk group, Amy, sorry, we couldn't get anybody to come in, you have to go back, so now you're having to do this, or this in your car, and that's a dangerous situation. Firefighters, by all means, they will change channels all day long. Police officers, not so much. We want to have this reliable. If someone takes a day off, we don't have to backfill, and everyone gets what was promised to them in the beginning.
You're not saying the dispatchers are muscle memory, it's for the police officer?
Oh, no, dispatchers as well.
Okay.
We are very muscle memory, because I can be looking at Rick and reach over here, and I know I'm hitting the fire channel, or I know what I'm hitting on the phone here without even looking. And if I have to change, oh, now they're both over here, I have to do this. And it, that, that is actually a very dangerous situation to take that muscle memory away and change it repeatedly.
I don't know if it was in the commissioners' meeting or something that I read, but clarify this for me. So you'd have a person assigned to Garrett, a person assigned to Auburn. Chief Klein's got everything calm, and Garrett peaceful, nothing's happening over there. You know, he's in bed, napping, and?
Garrett's always napping.
Yeah, you bet. So if that person isn't getting calls from Garrett, they're going to support the rest of the dispatch. They're not exclusively going to just service Garrett, or just, that's their priority when they're on?
Their primary assignment would be the Garrett talk group. But if Tiffany takes a phone call for a barn fire?
Yeah.
Anybody that's not actively doing something now supports her.
Correct. All right, thank you.
It is a complete team effort.
Thank you.
This may be known, but I just want to remind everybody, in 2014, when that excess levy appeal was done, and dispatch, well, even when dispatch came about, the Garrett and Auburn Dispatchers Centers themselves were removed, because everything went to Central Dispatch. So they originally had those. The cities both reduced their levy by the amount that the county increased their levy, so that the patrons of DeKalb County are not and have not been double taxed for this money. So when that was done in 2014, we're looking at, the county has been getting $305,915 to us, as the agreement when City of Garrett and Auburn reduced theirs, for us to give, take care of all the dispatch with the promise of each of them having one.
That would have been the base, so it would have been?
Correct.
Increased incrementally over these, what, 14 years?
2014, about, almost 10.
So I did, I did ask Brian to bring in Gerald and Cory if you had any questions there. The sheriff, Brady, is back there, you might have, if you have questions of, because right now, there's, he's, he's got people on the road too all the time, and we're now actually going to up that, we've, he's got some people hired, so we're going to have more people on the road, like it should have been. And also, I asked Mayor Yoder to come in, and he was the chairman of the Central Communications Board for, since its inception, I think, weren't you, Norm? So if you've got any questions for Norm, as to what was promised, or what we intended back in 14, this is the opportunity. Norm, you want to come up here to the podium?
Thank you.
My name's Norm Yoder, and I'm a proud ex-mayor of Auburn. Having said that, I did chair the meeting, and I was somewhat instrumental, not totally, but I was part of a group that Central Dispatch was a necessity, because we had three isolated talking things. Garrett had their own system, the county took care of Butler, and Waterloo had its own system, and Auburn had its own system, and the, and the state police had its own system, and none of them talked to each other. So you didn't have any operability at all in the law enforcement. So if you needed backup, you were pretty much on an island unless you patched into somebody else. But having said that, when we agreed to do it, we forgave the whole levy to Central in order to be able to afford, with the promise of when they could afford it. At the time, they said they could afford it right away, but circumstances, Rick pointed out, didn't happen, that we would get back to our own, Auburn would have its own channel, Garrett would have its own channel, and so on and so forth. That wasn't an even, it cost both the county, or the county had to, the dispatchers back in those days took care of some of the administrative calls also. And when you took that levy away, we had to find the money and transfer money to make sure that we still had somebody to take care of those administrative calls. The City of Garrett had to take care of their administrative calls, and the county had to find a way to resolve the problem of taking care of their ministry. So all three of those, it wasn't an even, say, "We're going to give you this levy, and all those responsibilities are going to go out to Central." They didn't. The dispatching part did, and interoperability is a plus for public safety, and also interoperability of the different departments. But each community had to come up with money, and the county had to come up with money to deal with those administrative calls. Somebody had to answer those. So it wasn't an even thing, but the promise has always been that when you could get there, we were going to go back to where Auburn would have its own channel, and Garrett would have its own channel, and so forth. One of the challenges with dispatchers and the thing is, there's a couple of challenges. Stress of the, what they deal with on the phone, but there's only so many people, muscle memory is one of them, but multitasking is the biggest one. You've got to find somebody who's really comfortable multitasking, because you're juggling multi, you're either sitting there doing nothing for a couple hours, and then all of a sudden, you've got 14 things going on, and you've got to keep all those things, and if you can reduce that, if you, if Auburn and Garrett is on the same channel, right now, they'd have 12 officers answering to that one dispatch. All 12 officers are probably doing something that involves dispatch. So you're, that person is juggling 12 different things going on at the same time. And so it's really, I mentioned to Rick, that's why you're only dealing with 1% or 2%. I had one person tell me, the perfect person, if they can pass the requirements to be a dispatcher, is a bartender, because they're, they're juggling, umpteen different drinks, umpteen different people, they're used to multitasking, and that's kind of, kind of a silly thing, but it sort of makes sense in a way. But there's only so many people can do, I can't do that. And when I was younger, I could do it a lot better, but I don't know if I could do that, let alone deal with that person where you're talking about life and death issues, what, what your communication may be key to saving that person's life, and that comes to the training of the dispatchers. So it can be very stressful from many different standards, and so my hat's off, as I was chairman of that committee for, I don't know, six, six, seven years, eight years. Turnover is always going to be a challenge because of circumstances of the job. And I will commend Tiffany and Brian, they've done a great job. They've probably done as good, a better job than the previous two that I hired, when I happened to be involved in hiring both of those. They've done a great job, but it's how do you, how do you fit a family so, and, and I've been out there, I was out there at the time when you have a medical emergency where life and death is an issue, where you're talking fire, you're talking police, you're talking EMS, and if other dispatchers aren't doing it, they're, they're all on board to that. But if a call comes in over here, that head dispatcher for that event's still doing, is still responsible for doing those juggling, because you may have another event over here that's just as serious, that, that responsibility. Right now, we're just a little bit, you're asking them to do a lot more than what they're probably capable of doing on a long-term basis, because it wears on, every job wears on you. So with that, you have any questions for me? I'm an old timer, and I really haven't got anything involved in it anymore, but I do appreciate all they do, and I know we live in a much safer county, because we have Central Dispatch than what we did before we had Central Dispatch.
My, my only question would be, do you have any idea why we haven't moved on this earlier, or why it's taken so long?
Oh, you ask. When I was chairman, I think I made an annual, annual trek over here, if Rick was on the council at the time. And it comes down to funding, and I understand that. I mean, and if you've got the wherewithal to do it now, please do. I, you know, it was promised, and Rick, we had it laid out, that we, it was going to get done, it was going to be fine, and it didn't happen, and through no fault of the county. The powers that be in Indianapolis decide, and they have jurisdiction, we answer to their, their bell. So having said that, but if you have the wherewithal to do it, I really would appreciate the support to do it now, rather than to put it off some more. We ask virtually every year, when I was involved in that, now we didn't beg, or we didn't, we pointed out, and if you don't have the resources, and that's not your priority, there's, you only have so much money, and I did when I was mayor, and you have to set your priorities of what you want to spend that money on. And Central Dispatch is one of those things, nobody, nobody really realizes it's a service, and nobody realizes there until they need it, or until they mess up. Again, I don't like, I mentioned to Rick the other night, that says, "I don't want to hear one of those recordings of Central Dispatch repeated on CNN from DeKalb County." And I wouldn't say that's going to happen, because we've got good people, but it can happen, and it does happen from time to time. So let's do the things we can to mitigate that before, before we get into that. And we're getting, and the county's growing, and the calls are going up, so. So anyway, I appreciate your support, appreciate all you do. So, is there any other questions?
I think so, thank you, Norm.
As I said, it's a lot easier being ex-mayor.
You know, Bob, I will tell you that I attend most of the Central Communications Board meetings, so they get told no a lot over there before it ever makes it here. So they get told no a lot over there before it ever makes it here.
Are we going to this, right away, or is this going into the?
July 1.
July 1.
July 1.
So in other words, this 178,000 is for a whole year, right?
That's two dispatchers for the rest of the year.
The rest of the year?
That was, that was the number we came up for the rest of the year.
This is for six months?
Six months.
No, no. I'm sorry, that's the wrong figure.
That was for a whole year.
So we're, we're talking, come on, man, 178 divided by 2.
Susan, do you have that number? I've got to print that one out.
No.
Eight, around 84, 90,000?
And, and one of the things that, one of the things that Brian did when he computed that number was he computed it using the most expensive benefit plan for that individual. So if that individual comes in and takes a family plan, but if it's, if he takes just a single, it's, it's going to be a different amount. He wanted, he wanted to go worst-case scenario.
I'd rather give you guys the worst case than say, oh, by the way, it's not that bad.
I'd rather have that than the other way around, please.
Right, and when he asked, I gave, I provided him the range, but we can't tell you it's going to be a lot less, and be like, oh, well, they need family, and so that's why it went that way.
Okay, what's that? Actions that we need to do now, keep it moving?
Well, the, the Commissioners have approved this. They approved this last Monday, I believe it was, or a week ago Monday. And we need to authorize it so that we can do the additional starting in July.
Rick, I did have a quick question. You had mentioned earlier that we can use the funds out of what you, I think you mentioned two.
Public safety, public safety.
Public safety.
And we do have the funds there now.
Amy, that is Fund 1170. If you look on, if you're looking on your balances.
Because this is Central Communications, none of their expenses come from the general fund. It only comes from the 911 fund or Public Safety Fund.
And these are just for two dispatchers, they're not for leaders, or whatever you call them, captains or whatever?
No, these will be, we currently have four supervisors, these will be two, two additional dispatchers.
Was this the one that we talked about earlier? What were we talking about?
Did I bring this up earlier?
Yeah, yeah, about, that it was reducing public safety, that we didn't want to do that.
There is a possibility.
Because it would remove some of the funds from the cities and towns, right? So this is the same one that we would be using to hire these two additional? Have we discussed that with the cities and towns? Will that affect them?
Not yet.
Okay, wait, wait, wait. The hiring of the two will have no effect on the city and towns. It will only be if, down the road, if the discussion happens that Rick had explained, and you decide to reduce the rate of the public safety to put to the correctional facility part to get savings for a new jail at some point. But not until that, and that's a whole big process, not until that process happens, does it affect the city and towns.
And we, you know, we may do it, we may not do it. But I'm actually, I'm actually comfortable with doing that because in turn, we are giving Auburn and Garrett something for that. If they were to lose money, and we don't know how much that would be, but if they were to lose something, they would have still gotten the benefit out of that change because of what we're doing here.
Hope they agree.
I hope they do too. You know, I hope they do too.
We're making decisions for them that, that could affect them, that maybe they're not anticipating.
Again, that discussion could go multiple ways. We have room to increase the, what we take in, in local option income tax. We, because we're at 2.13 or something like that, and we are allowed to go up to 2.5. Nobody wants to do that. So, but we do have room to go there. We're talking about 0.07% is what we're talking about, if there's a change at all. Because there is a limit on where you can take the public safe, the, the community corrections grant to.
So Amy, the decision with the two dispatchers, and your concern for affecting the cities and towns, they actually already had both City of Auburn and Garrett. They had actually already voted to give us that money clear back in 2014. So we're already getting our increased levy from the two dispatcher discussion currently. The other part is a separate issue versus the two additional dispatchers. The levy, the excess levy has not changed since 2015, or 2014, I'm sorry.
Okay, Dave.
And it's just, it's strictly about money, it's needed, and it's, no denying that. The problem is, I think we're looking, we're covering it for sure, because right now, we're going to be entering a budget cycle here, coming up with a budget with a lot of uncertainties. Excuse me, I mean, there's going to be a lot of questions, because we had big raises last year, we're going to have a lot of raises again this year. Key people here, we're already looking at possibly making levies up for a tax increase here to offset this. We're looking at wheel tax possibly coming, I mean, we're talking multiple tax increases possibly could be coming. And that really concerns me, because we're just on the, we're going to be in the budget, you know, I know the tax cap fees may get shot down. We talked about that here, you know, they were talking about lowering the tax cap from 1% to 0.97 or something, which is going to have a huge impact on counties. We've got counties that are struggling right now, they've already enacted the wheel tax and things, and they're running out of options here. And I just don't want to see us run out of options here before we get to that point. But I'm really concerned with the budget coming there. We've got some big expenses coming, adding stuff already this year, and it's nothing against Central Dispatch.
No, no.
110% behind you, but when you look at the numbers, which is what we have to look at. We've got a lot of gray area out there that I'm just not real comfortable about there.
We do have a large excess balance in that fund, more than what is needed. I can tell you, at the end of 2022, there was, you know, how we do our estimate of between around 30% of what we, of cash, okay, they were at 78% in their, in that fund. So, because I was asked, we, we, we have the money to be able to fund that at this, right now, plus extra.
What, what limit is?
Our target for 2023, when we, when you did budget, with his current budget and everything in it, we were at a 78% cash reserve still in that fund.
Well, and what I can promise you guys, I can only do so much. We try to be as fiscally responsible as possible. We will go for grants, we will do whatever needs to be, because by no means do I want to take all the money and not leave somebody else out in the cold. The, the county itself is a team effort, it's a collaboration, and we will do our part to save every penny we can. Because that's the way Tiffany and I believe. Well, no, I just, I wanted to be aware that that's our goal, is to be as fiscally responsible and save as much money as possible when we can.
But Dave, Dave's point is, is well-taken. We do have a lot of things coming down the pike for next year, and it's why I made the comments I made earlier about really sitting down and having some serious discussions about this. It is the beauty, though, of fund accounting, in that, you know, you might have a lot of money in this pocket, but guess what? You can't spend it on any of these expenses over here, because it's not in the right pocket. And that, this public safety money is limited to just a very few places where we could actually use it. We can't use it for highway, we can't use it for the auditor's office or anything like that. It can only, we're, we're limited pretty much to Central Communications and the Sheriff's Department is primarily where we can use it. And we will, and we've used it for both places for, for quite some time. The wheel tax, the wheel tax is something that is, you know, the, number one, the highway department's funded by our, our gas, our gas tax income, which comes to us from the state on a monthly basis. That fluctuates, we know. If we do, if we do implement a wheel tax, it is very limited in that it can only be used to build or maintain roads. And that was one thing I was very concerned about when we were talking about the bond issue for the Highway Department garage. I didn't want anybody to get the impression that we were talking about a wheel tax to pay for that highway garage, because we're not, and because the wheel tax cannot be used for those kind of expenses. So this is, this is an issue that needs to be addressed. I, I'm hopeful that we can address it this year, and we're going to work around it, and we're going to spend a lot of time in August working through all those issues that you're talking about, Dave, because they are very, they're out there, they're very prominent, and we have to address it, we have to talk about it.
Is this someone we're going to vote on today?
Yes. We need to, to vote for authorizing him to hire the two dispatchers, beginning with the, and July 1 is not the right day, whatever the first pay period of July would be, I think is the way it probably should be done, or can we do it just with July 1?
You can do it however you want. I mean, it can happen anytime.
Okay.
It can happen anytime, because then that, that just bases what we do, the additional appropriation off of, for those line items.
So yes, we would like a motion to approve the hiring of these two additional dispatchers to begin July 1.
So move.
And move by Councilman Van Wyk.
I'll second it.
And seconded by Councilwoman Dembski. Further discussion? Comment from the public?
Who else do we use at Public Safety? That's mostly just out there.
The only other thing that we have used it for, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
The only other thing that we've used it for in the last couple of years is a portion of the Sheriff's pension. But otherwise, it's all, we've pretty much structured it for dispatch.
But more than half his, his people are paid out of that, or is it all paid out of there? Someone's paid out of the government.
Some are paid out of Fund 1222, the E911, but I, we shifted a majority for 23, right?
When Bill Hunter was the Director, he made some changes on who was paid out of which fund, because at that point in time, we had almost completely depleted the 1222. The 1222 fund is, I don't want to say rainy day, but if we would have a major issue with radio equipment or something like that, that's what that is, those funds are there for as well. Staffing, equipment, things of that nature.
Well, didn't we just put all new radios in?
Yep, and we pay a very penny, nice penny for the maintenance. But thanks to you guys approving the payment of that, that was reimbursed out of COVID funds. I believe after Susan cut the check, we had the 600,000 back in a month. So technically, it didn't cost us anything but some time. Now we're just paying our maintenance.
And right now, you're waiting on the state is supposedly going to take over some of the expenses that you have in the department right now.
Yes, they're supposed to take over a lot of our 911 connectivity fees. That was discussed when we did the radio project. It's Barry Ritter and Ritter Strategic, I can't remember what the last part of his name is. The state hasn't gotten all their information, it's still coming, we just don't have a timeline, because when we originally talked about it, it was supposed to be 18 months.
And that's about how much a month?
Uh, we pay Frontier 5,000, and just Frontier 5,000 a month. City of Auburn, another 1400 to 1500. There's Bright Speed. How many other phone companies do we pay? We're probably talking right around 10,000 a month in connectivity fees that will, at some point, be taken over by the state.
Well, you know, we, we already said that, you know, that we had the ability to pay for this out of our own 911 fee that the state took away from us immediately.
I also add.
And I'll tell you, when I, because I was the one that put in countywide 911 when I was still EMS Director. And our, our monthly 911 fee was 83 cents. And it's now a dollar, and that was 1991, and it's now just a dollar. Just ridiculous.
I'll also add, just for knowledge, this is not to persuade, I'm not trying to persuade anyway, this is just knowledge that I learned from being in this position. Our financial advisor also has said that this public safety low-up money, this fund, would be a fund that we would want to, not we, that you as counsel would want to try to spend down as much as possible each year, because that is a need that we had, that's why we are taxing the county, because that's the need that we needed. So it is advisable to spend that fund down more than what we have in the recent year.
And, and we do have to do an annual PSAP report to the State 911 Board. They want to know what we spent, what we spent it on, and anything that is left over in that 1222, they want to know what we, our future plans for it, not just, that's our piggy bank, no, we're moving towards this, this, and this. So to go with what Susan said, we do, we really do need to spend it. If the taxpayers are being taxed on it, we need to spend it for the things we need.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of a motion of hiring two additional dispatchers beginning July 1, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same?
Aware that we were voting on this today.
All right. Dave, did I hear a no from you?
I'm not voting, I'm just.
Five to, five to two. All right. All right. Thank you much, Brian, Corey, Gerald, Brady, Mayor, thank you for coming, I appreciate it. Tiffany, you too. Our council, our, our, our council needs to go to lunch.
I'm 15 minutes late for my next meeting.
Okay, well, thank you, Don. We have one last item of business that we haven't done yet.
Well, no, 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 no. We need 2024 budget guidance to give the departments.
All right, let's get this, let's get this salary ordinance out of the way first.
Okay.
Do we have a copy of it for me?
We haven't voted in, we haven't approved any of those classification changes.
Well, and that's what's in the salary ordinance, right?
That will approve those?
This is approving those?
The ordinance only approves those changes that need to be changed immediately to happen yet this year. The other classifications are separate, I guess you guys have to approve them, I don't know.
And which ones are missing, then, that we have to approve? We've got the Office Administrator in here, we've got the Juvenile Education Program Coordinator in here, and we've got the maintenance full-time.
So IT, IT had no classification change, that was just a revised job description.
Okay.
Juvenile educator, educational program facilitator, just a job. Description change.
But we don't, we don't need to approve those?
The committee is just recommending that they have, that they have approved it, and, but there's really no classification change. So I don't, I don't think it needs formally approved, it's just no classification change, and then the, like, if it's a different title. approved, it's just no classification change, and then the, like, if it's a different title, that will just happen the next budget, but however you guys want to do it.
We'll not do anything with it today. If we decide that it needs to be done, we put it on the agenda for next month.
That's up to all of you, whether you want to approve those that are not changing.
Well, if we're going to approve it, I want to, I, let's get the documentation we need, whether it's, it doesn't need to be. Which one are you talking about, Amy?
That's on, that's.
In the salary ordinance.
In the salary ordinance, what he has.
I've got the maintenance full-time, juvenile education programs coordinator, and the office administrator in the sheriff's department are the three that are on here. So if the other ones need to be changed, I don't, you know, I don't need, know that it needs to be a, I don't know that it needs to be an ordinance, but it would need to just, just list it out so that we know what we're actually voting on for these other ones.
If that's what you want, I'll make something up.
I know you, I know you'll handle it, I know you'll handle it.
Okay, got it.
All right. 2023 Salary and Hourly Wage Ordinance Amendment, DeKalb County Council, Ordinance Number 2023-OCC-5, is amending Ordinance 2023-OCC-1. I have a motion to approve this ordinance on first reading. And this includes, again, maintenance full-time, juvenile education programs coordinator, and the office administrator, IDAX coordinator, and the sheriff's department. So courthouse, community corrections, and the sheriff's department.
I make a motion to approve.
Then moved by Councilman Collins, is there a second? Second, second by Councilwoman Prosser. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, that motion's carried. Next, I need a motion to suspend the rules and read this on second and third reading by title only. Then moved by Councilwoman Dembski to suspend the rules. Second by Councilman Van Wyk.
Let me just go there.
Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same, that motion's carried. 2023 Salary and Hourly Wage Ordinance Amendment, DeKalb County Council, Ordinance Number 2023-OCC-5, amending Ordinance Number 2023-OCC-1. And I have a motion to approve this ordinance on second and third readings.
So moved.
And moved by Councilman Van Wyk.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Prosser. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor passing this on second and third reading signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, that motion's carried. So, that's that. We'll have to sign that before we leave. The other item that Susan was discussing was the department heads are now going to need direction on how to prepare their budgets that are going to be turned in rather shortly. Normally, we would give them direction on maybe pay increases, and then the general amounts for the remainder of their budget. Currently, the inflation rate is 6%. I don't, I'm not sure that, that if that's going to change much at all, it may go up a little bit, it may come down a little bit, but I think it's pretty much going to, we're going to look at it generally at 6%. I did say that there is a bill in the legislature right now that would confine the growth quotient for next year to one-half of the actual inflation rate, or a maximum of 3%. If that happens, we're all going to be, and I'm talking about every city, town, every county is going to be in the same boat, that we're going to only be allowed to go up probably less than inflation. So that's just something we have to keep in mind. But in previous years, we've always had them also include what increases they would like to have on their, on their individual positions. And we, of course, have done two studies, one with their job descriptions and one with the actual place where we're at, as far as their wages, done that with WIS. We, of course, are not going to do that again this year, but we're going to have to take into account a number of things. Number one, what's the, what's the, what's the private sector paying, and that has a lot to do with CDL drivers and nurses, or clerical people, what's the, what's the private sector doing? We are also going to have the advantage, hopefully, of having the AIC annual study that shows what currently is being paid for different positions in similar counties of similar size. So we will have some information. One of the things that Susan likes is the fact that when we do have them put in their, their wages, we always advertise high, and then when we go through the budget and actually approve the budget, it's always something less than that amount. We don't have to add money after we've already advertised. It's always been a situation of cutting. So, what's your pleasure this time? Do we want to have them just give us their budgets with, assuming that inflation is going to be between maybe 5 and 6, or between 5 and 7%, plus include their, their wage requests? That we're, we're going to go back and adjust ourselves anyway? Or do you want them to do just their, their basic budget, and we'll do the raises, we'll do that portion of it?
I might use just the basic.
Anybody else comment? Susan, if we do that, can you, before you advertise, put in a, a number for the, you know, just as a, as a target shot? Can you, we can have them do their, all their supplies and all the other line items other than, other than salaries, and then can you add a, a dollar amount or a percentage before we advertise, so that we don't get caught unawares?
Yes.
I would agree with you, Dave. I would like to see them have the department heads do their, do their budgets for the other items, which they're certainly going to have more knowledge of than what we do with the vendors and that, that they, that they deal with. Hopefully, we'll have some numbers for our health insurance, because that'll be a commissioner issue that they get that number in there. That satisfactory with everybody?
Fine with me, since the president and vice president have spoken, I'll agree.
Well, you know, you and I always agreed, right? Yeah, right. Oh, Dave.
You know, the one who gets the best gets the best.
So are you giving them a certain percentage on the everything but wages, or are you just asking them to present what they need?
Well, what do you think? I mean, I would like to see them stay within 6% or below, I mean, that's, okay, shall we, shall we go with 6? Or, you know, in previous years, we've kind of always undercut them and went with something less than the actual inflation rate.
You can always add to a low number.
Right.
Say 5%. I, I, I.
Non-wage items, yeah. So 5%? All right, let's do, let's do 5% on non-wage items. We'll do the, we'll do the increases for wages on our side. The only other big number out there that I'm thinking about is that whatever, you know, insurance is going to change, and whatever that's, whatever that's going to be. You know, the auditor's office is just so darn efficient, that they have already provided me with a document here.
I don't like stuff going over.
You don't want it to wait a month, do you?
Just do it and get it done.
Council approval of the job classification recommendation to approve the updated job descriptions with no classification changes. Since I really shouldn't be the one making any motions, if you would do that, David, I'd appreciate it. Tell them what you're making the motion on.
Okay. Council approval of job classification recommendation to approve the updated job description with no classification changes. Information systems, help desk administrator through application support analysis, approve revised job description, one big one, or no classification changes. ECCC, juvenile education program facilitator, approve updated job description, no classification change. ECCC, presidential services facilitator, presidential facilitator or facility officer, approve this updated job description.
So we have a motion, we have a second. Second, motion by Councilman Yards, second by Councilman Kraft. Any discussion? Okay.
The whole title of the document is updated job descriptions only, no classification changes.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, motion's carried.
Thank you all.
Is there any additional things to come before the council? If not, Mr. Collins?
I would certainly like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
And moved and seconded, that we adjourn, those in favor signify by saying aye.
You stick around and discuss it.
Motion's carried. Rick, I want, I want to make this known, though, that, you know, that the lengthy meetings seem to have started when you joined the council.